There she is. How are you?
Do you have anything for me? I don't, but I will have it tomorrow.
Okay. And then, I probably got this phone extension information. So I just printed it out for you. Access your extension.
Wonderful.
And then here's your open.
How was your day today?
The book of the middle school code, or do you want to just...
It was pretty good.
Okay. So I did send a response. I'm just wondering if you're not getting all my emails. I'm a little bit worried.
You know, we'll...
Okay. I'll look. I'll look on it.
Please.
And I'll visit tomorrow, see if I'm getting all your responses.
Okay.
Because I looked at junk mail, I didn't see anything, but I'll check.
Okay. And then try also, if you could, to use my treasure email.
Okay.
Because then I really know, I don't have to sort through my big junk mail.
Okay.
You know? Yeah, I'm glad he's coming out. Hopefully, hopefully that won't get overwhelmed with junk.
Okay, we'll see how it goes.
Okay. Absolutely. How's your week going?
So good. Yeah, it feels like it should be Friday, though.
I did the same thing today.
You work all time?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Nineteen.
Well, we'll persevere.
Okay.
Right?
We'll see. I have my fingers crossed.
Okay.
Application for Sandra Erickson. She just... And then, can you help me use the timer for the speakers? Okay.
Present this. She signed it?
I would love to.
Okay, that'd be great. Good evening, everyone. We're going to start the meeting, so please take your seats and get comfortable. We're going to be here for a number of hours tonight. We'll try to move through things smoothly and quickly, so that people don't have to wait until 10 or 11 o'clock tonight for their item. Welcome, everyone. We're so happy that you're here tonight. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Norton.
Here.
Councilmember Story.
Here.
Councilmember Batorf.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Harland.
Here. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have some presentations tonight, and would the chief like to come up first and
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Rudy Escalante, Chief of Police. We have a very special opportunity to present to our, one of our K-9 officers, and our, one of our Canines, Damian, who unfortunately suffered a stroke this year and had to retire. And so, I'd like to call Officer Leland Blankenship up with Damian. I'm going to forewarn everybody now, when you clap, she is going to get very excited, because she just loves all the attention and is just a fantastic service dog to our department and is part of our family. And so, before the mayor, or before Councilmember Termini reads the proclamation, Leland, on behalf of the department, we present you this gift, and we thank you for your six years of valuable service to this community. And Damian, you did great.
Would you like to, would you like to say a few words? Leland, would you like to...
It's okay, we get that a lot. You ready, Damian?
Would you rather that we not clap? Would that be easier?
It's a long sentence.
Okay, put the timer on. Leland. So, I'm just going to give you this proclamation and not read it, but I signed it, and the mayor said that I should be giving it to you. And having ridden along with you folks, you know, with the K-9 unit, it's just remarkable what they do and how they do it, and how well-trained they are, and the bond between the officer and the service animal. It opened my eyes to a lot of things. So, thank you for your service, thank you for Damian's service, and good luck and take good care of her, because I know that she will continue to live out her years with you.
She will.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You know what? See how amazing, how quick we learn?
Jamie, did you want to make your presentation now? Or you want to wait till oral communications?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Madam Mayor, I did want to announce that unfortunately, we are leaving, losing another member of the Capitola family. Lisa Saldana has accepted a promotional opportunity to become the Finance Services Manager for the city of Seaside down the bay. And while we are certainly sad to see her go, I also am very happy for Lisa, because I think this is going to be a terrific opportunity, and I want to congratulate her and publicly acknowledge her for the years of service for the city. So, thank you, Lisa.
And you're welcome to come up and speak if you want to and be on television. Okay. Thank you, Lisa. We really appreciate all your hard work and your care in so many ways for Capitola and your good work, and we're going to miss you and hope you'll come back and join us maybe at Christmas party and next year's Christmas party also, because I know the employees would love to see you. Okay, may we have the report on closed session, please? Mr. Barisone.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The items that the city council discussed in closed session this evening are those listed on the first two pages of the council's posted agenda. And the council first discussed potential litigation between the county and the city pertaining to the Nobel Gulch Pipe Failure and actually who's responsible for the pipe's maintenance. The city manager provided the council with a status report on that matter, and the council gave us ongoing instructions with regard to the ongoing discussion of that matter with the county and the potential litigation, and took no other reportable action in closed session. The council also discussed the threat of a lawsuit that's been made with the city of Capitola pertaining to the ordinance. That's on the council's agenda tonight, the plastic bag ordinance. A industry organization entitled Save the Plastic Bag Coalition, which opposes the ordinance, has threatened to sue the city, and we provided the council with a status report on that, threaten litigation, but the council took no reportable action in closed session. The city is also prosecuting its own lawsuit against Lexington Insurance Company for property damage that the city sustained during the March 2010 pipe failure, for which we submitted an insurance claim to Lexington Insurance, in which Lexington denied the claim. So, we are now in the midst of a lawsuit over that, and we provided the council with a status report on that lawsuit, which is pending in the federal court in San Jose. The next series of cases, Calford, Katie Saldana Truck Insurance, David Ross, American Alternative Insurance Corporation, Capital, California Capital Insurance Company, and Kawahara, are all cases in which property owners are suing the city of Capitola for damages they allegedly sustained when the pipe failed in March of 2010. And we provided the council with a status report on that litigation, which is being handled by the city's insurance JPA, Embeja. The council took no reportable action on that matter in closed session. Finally, the council heard from the city attorney and the city manager with regard to the lawsuit that's pending in Santa Cruz County Superior Court entitled Schrodel versus City of Capitola. A number of the Pacific Cove mobile homeowners are suing the city in connection with the closure of the Pacific Cove Mobile Home, and more specifically, the benefits they claim they're entitled to as a result of that closure. Again, we just provided the council with a status report on that matter, and the council took no reportable action in closed session. Finally, the council discussed with the city manager, in his capacity as a real property negotiator for the city, a potential cell tower lease agreement with the city relative to a small portion of property in the parking lot, the city hall parking lot. Again, the city manager provided the council with a status report on that matter, on those negotiations, and gave Mr. Goldstein instructions with regard to potential negotiations or lack thereof. And that's the end of my oral report on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Barisone. The next item is additions or deletions to the agenda. Do we have any?
Yes, I have a couple. One is, you all received, as additional material, an application from Sandra Erickson for the city's Financial Advisory Commission. Later this evening, we're going to discuss the appointments for that commission as well as others. And also, I did want to mention regarding item 8C, the tenant's security deposit, that I received a letter from the county stating that the county board of supervisors have adopted a resolution setting the tenant's security deposit for 2013 at 0.02 percent, and we'll discuss that item later this evening if necessary.
Thank you. On that item, I'd like to recommend that, to the council, that we continue the second half of the appointments until the next meeting and do the committees that were on. But for the citizens committee, I haven't had time to interview a couple of the people, so I'd like to postpone that until the next meeting and interview those people, and then have that discussion. So if there's anyone here who's applied for those committees, you don't need to stay for that part of it, because we'll continue it, if that's all right.
I agree, Madam.
Can I have one thing, Stephanie?
Yes.
Is that we direct staff to come back with a description of duties and responsibilities and of those committees?
Yeah, we can do that. What I'll do is, for the internal appointments, what we'll do is, is we'll bring back some of the original resolutions that we're used to establish, and a little bit of background about what the role is and when they were established.
Good, thank you very much. The next item is public comments, and this is a time for anyone in the public to speak on an item that's not on the agenda. If it's an item on the agenda, please wait till we get there. But if you have any questions or announcements, please come up. Good evening.
Good evening, Duke Council and Mayor. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
Karen Hannah, I just wanted to come and say a couple of thank yous. First of all, to the councils for the free, three-hour parking in the village. This year more than ever. Every person who walked in the door, almost without exception, makes a comment about the free parking, and it has brought so many locals and close to locals in Santa Cruz into the village, and they just, they all comment on it. So, I really want to thank you. I know things were tight, and actually, I was extremely nervous about it, because I know it does cost the city a lot of money to do that free parking during that time, but it's very, 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 very appreciating. And I also want to thank Mike and Brian Electric for helping with the lights, especially the Deco Hill lights, which are just a huge hit, and I think really mean a lot to everybody, all the locals who get work up there and see all the houses. And Mike's people spent about three whole day in the village. She says that, you know, all those bags came off Capitola Beaches. So, I really appreciate that, and just all the business people appreciate your support this time of year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Marilyn Garrett, Wireless Radiation Alert Network. And I must say, I'm very shocked to hear that the city is considering having a radiation-emitting cell tower in the parking lot, which is known, categorized as carcinogen, as hyperradiation by the World Health Organization as of May 2011. And I was in this very city hall, was it six years ago, when there was a similar plan to have a cell tower in the parking lot, and it was basically mixed, thanks to your initial comments, Mayor Stephanie Harland. It's not a tourist attraction, microwaving the community and destroying nature, because this is an underlying factor in the decline of the bee and bird population. It's not a tourist attraction, and it's contrary to the values of Capitola to preserve and enhance the nature space and the wildlife and the scene store here. And you've been given considerable data, scientific data, on the injurious impact of this microwave radiation. And I would urge anyone in the city or anywhere to absolutely oppose this. And that the city would be taking money from a telecom corporation for their profit and our demise is not appropriate for the values and the values of the city of Capitola. These weren't the comments I was going to make, but I need to find out more information on that, because I think it's pretty horrifying. There's already too much of this exposure, layers upon layers upon layers, and the 14 technology is making people even more ill. Now, I was looking at this dog, and very saddened, because I love pets, and I know that also, they are very harmed by these frequencies. And I'm thinking stopsmarteaters.org, and there's an article, I encourage people to pick up, the most recent Connection magazine that's 2012, that there's some articles on microwave radiation technology being related to the heating up of the planet and the satellites that are emitting radiation, one about hearings about PG&E and the smart eaters. But one thing on the website of stopsmarteaters.org is a report of a woman whose dog slept at the foot of her bed from the time she brought it home, till the time the so-called smart eater microwave radiation was installed on her house. And that dog went whimpering and would not sleep at the foot of her bed anymore. So, I urge you to check this out. Also, it's been known that the pulse modulations can stop heartbeat and is related to strokes. And I wonder what this poor canine was exposed to, because we know the police technologies are impacting not only the policemen and the firemen, but the animals as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephanie, I think we should clarify what the council discussed tonight as far as the cell tower behind us.
Could you please, just to first...
I think we should respond to what she just said here, because that's not our decision. Our decision, our decision as a council was not to go forward with a tower in the back behind the city hall.
So, it's not to go forward?
That's right.
That's right, but thank you. Because this was before the council, was it six years ago?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, could we call a one-minute break? I think we're having a little bit of technical problems with the microphone.
The microphone's not working. Yes. So, we'll take a couple-minute break to fix that microphone. This one's, these are working up here, but that one's, this is working.
Ariel Rup is with me tonight. So we're here to give you just some fun, silly reporting about the holiday season, and we want to make sure that the council and some of the residents know, that the visitors' council is partnering with the Capitola Village BIA, in Innet Depot Hill and Best Western Plus for a little holiday fun. We're inviting visitors and locals to submit fun holiday photos. So anything from an ugly Christmas sweater, you know, if you have your favorite Christmas sweater, the lights in the village, just fun memories of holidays here in Capitola and the Santa Cruz area. We have some great prizes. There's a first prize, two-night stay at the Innet Depot Hill and a $300 shopping spree in the village. Second prize is a two-night stay at the Best Western Plus Capitola by the Sea and a $200 shopping spree in the village. So I'm going to turn it over to Ariel to let everybody know how you can enter. We brought some flyers with us to hand out, and she'll talk a little bit about how it's being promoted. But I want to thank the BIA, the Best Western Plus, and Innet Depot Hill for supporting this as well.
So, so far, we've had pretty good turnout. We've had a lot of people who have submitted photos, some even of Capitola itself, some really beautiful Christmas photos. And we've done a lot of promoting of the contest and had some pretty good response. We did a lot of stuff on Facebook, because it's actually a photo contest that's being run through Facebook. So we do our own posts on the Santa Cruz County Facebook wall. We do Facebook advertisements as well, which helps to garner more likes for our page. And then, we've also been posting on the Visit California wall, which is the state tourism entity, and they've all really helped us to get more entries. These are just some samples of the pictures that we've gotten so far. We've also, we also wrote a press release and submitted it to some regional news outlets, and done a blog post. So we've done a lot social media-wise, and we're really excited. I'm going to leave these flyers in the back, if anyone's interested in winning some awesome prizes from Capitola. There's more information here.
Thank you very much.
And those at home can log on to santacruzcounty travel, and you'll find a link. And the deadline is...
The 19th.
The 19th of this month. Happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays to you. Any other public comments about anything not on tonight's agenda? Then we'll go to council and staff announcements. Are there any staff announcements? Council announcements? I'd like to ask Tim to come up for a minute, because I want to give a report on the last Santa Cruz County Integrated Solid, Integrated Waste Management Local Task Force, in case there's any questions I can't answer, or if I say something that's incorrect, you can correct me. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Are there any, any, you want me to do that now, Mike?
No, I was going to say, in the course of...
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, we met on Thursday, December 6, and this is a countywide committee from representatives from the cities and the county to get together and talk about working on reducing our waste and recycling and all sorts of good environmental projects and working together where we can. And Tim Goncharoff is the staff, our wonderful staff person who's here tonight and on another item. But anyway, I just wanted to give you some information about a couple of these things, because it's a really, really exciting work that everybody's doing, all the cities and the county are doing. And I'll just give a couple of the highlights. The regional air board outlawed burning up in San Lorenzo Valley. And so they provided money for a program for the residents to turn in yard waste cleanup. And in November, they had 470 people that participated, and they collected 174 tons of yard waste. That's a lot of yard waste. So that's a, that's a really excellent program. That was really very, very successful. There's a program called Sharp Solutions, and the Capitola Police just got a container for drugs only. So if you have medicines at home that you're not going to use, don't flush them down the toilet, because then they can get into the water system. And don't put them in the garbage, because they'll get in the landfill. And now you can bring them down to the lobby of the police department and put, put them in there, and then they're disposed of appropriately. So that's a really exciting program. And we have, there were, then there's a paint care program, and this is to recycle paint. And instead of throwing it in the garbage or having to drive all the way down to Buena Vista, you can take it back to paint stores. And there's two Kelly Moore stores, one in Santa Cruz and one in Watsonville, and the Sherman Williams in Santa Cruz, where you can take it. And this was, this program was kicked off in September, and it was funded by the paint industry. Small fee was added on to the paints to manage this program, and there are 350 retail take-back paint stores in California. And the single-use bag ordinance, we'll be talking about later, but Save Our Shores has been monitoring the stores and report that up to upwards of 80% of people are already bringing in their own bags, which is tremendous. And the county in March is going to celebrate their one-year anniversary of not allowing plastic bags, and their, the rate is going to go up from 10 cents a bag to 25 cents a bag at the stores. And in April, for an Earth Day celebration, they're going to be expanding it to restaurants, and they're also going to have increased their bag giveaways, as we will be doing also. Any other, the awards, I wasn't sure about that, Tim. There's a government environmental award that Santa Cruz County received.
Would you like me to explain that?
Yes, please.
Sure. Each year, the governor presents an award called the Governor's Environmental and Economic Leadership Award, or GILAs. It's the preeminent environmental award in the state of California. It's kind of a big deal. It's presented in several categories. One of them is waste reduction, and this year, that award is going to be presented to the county of Santa Cruz. There will be an award ceremony in Sacramento in January, so there will be an official announcement when it's a little closer. But we're very excited about it. It's a testament to the work, not just of the county, but of all of our partners in the cities and in the environmental community. We have a lot of help, but we're very happy about that.
And Ecology Action also received an award.
They did, indeed.
Yeah, so that's very exciting. We're doing a lot of, a lot of great things here in this county. And I think for the paint program, we talked about possible legislation that would require all paint stores to, at some point, have this little small fee, but then, when you went to buy another can of paint, you could take it back there?
Yes. There are kind of two trends in legislation for retail take-back programs like paint, like the used drugs and some other products, motor oil, fluorescent light bulbs, there are other examples. The preferred approach is to have the industry organize them voluntarily, and we've had some success with that. There's a pilot program for batteries, for example. Sometimes they don't work as well as we'd like, sometimes they don't move as fast as we'd like. So there's talk in Sacramento of a mandatory program. Sometimes just those discussions prompt the industry to move forward with their own programs. But we do expect legislation to be introduced on paint recycling and probably some of the other issues in the current session in Sacramento.
That's great. And it would be wonderful if we could get legislation on these issues, so that when you went to the store to buy some batteries, you could turn in your old ones. Or buy, go buy some more light bulbs, you could turn in your old ones, because right now, people don't really know what to do with them. So we're, we're working on it. Anything else you'd like to talk about, about this?
You were very thorough. I'll, I'll come back up when you get to the plastic bag issue, but I think you covered the rest very well.
Okay, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay. Council, are there comments by the treasurer?
I have no comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Board and commission appointments, we're going to be talking about later. And so the next item is the consent calendar. This is a group of usually relatively minor topics that we take with one motion, unless anyone would like to pull it for separate discussion. Is there anyone that'd like to pull something?
Stephanie, I think you have a presentation from the finance committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Presentation by the finance committee. Please introduce yourself to everyone.
Christine, Chair of the Finance Committee. Thank you, council members, for giving us time. I come to you this evening with a recommendation from the finance committee. Sorry, I thought I was going later. So, good evening. Tonight, I want to provide a recommendation from the finance committee. The Finance Advisory Committee recommends that the council consider increasing the emergency fund, fund from its current 5% of operating expenses to 10%, as well as the contingency reserves from its current 10% to 15%. And kind of the why, I want to kind of walk through this cash projection graph with you to try to understand kind of how we go through our year's spending cash. And this is just a snapshot from June, July 2011 to June 2012. So if you notice, there's peaks and there's valleys. And those peaks are caused by us receiving a lot of our revenue. Key revenue sources during those peak points, things like property tax, things like our sales tax, as well as the INLU fees. So you'll notice that happens two times a year. It happens in April, and it happens in December. The issue, though, is during the valleys, we're kind of running our city in the red. So our goal is, if we, we were thinking, if we can increase the contingency as well as the reserves, you'll notice that middle line there that shows that we actually go, we dip below. We're starting to go under the red, so we dip below, and we have negative dollars. We're doing the shuffle of moving money around. So the goal is if we can bring that whole entire graph up a little bit, we never kind of have to worry about running in the red. Jamie could probably sleep at night. You all could probably sleep at night, and we'd all be a little bit happier. So, questions about that graph? It's a lot to kind of, okay. So you'd notice, like I said, last two times, last two times in the year, we ran just a little bit below. So we, the finance committee, believing that increasing those contingency reserves and those emergency reserves will really help us get through those valleys a whole lot healthier. We, right now, we have, the timing's perfect. We've received some unexpected revenues, some unexpected cash that we hadn't accounted for. Our police chief is running a very conservative budget. Our sales tax revenue's up, our parking revenue's up, and we believe the time is now. I like to say, fix the roof while the sun is shining. Okay? And that kind of means a lot with the flood and things that we had here. So, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for your time. We really appreciate listening.
Thank you, Christine.
Now, we'll go on to the consent calendar. Would any council member like to pull any item?
I'd like to move the consent calendar.
Would anyone in, is there a second?
I'll second.
Would anyone in the audience like to pull some, or should we go to council members first?
Everhow you'd like to do it, Mayor.
Council members.
Okay, I'd like to pull item E.
Okay. Any others?
I would like to pull item G for just a quick little amendment.
Any others? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss any of these items separately? Then we have a motion on the floor for the remainder and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will, you want to discuss that now, or do you want to put it on for later?
My item, I think I'd like to talk about at the end of the agenda.
Okay. Okay, we'll put those on for the end then. Okay, we'll move on to item number nine, the general government hearing, public hearings. And item A, review of the city council, representation on city and county, multi-county boards, commissions, committees, et cetera. And we have a list of those on our desk. And we have, for the public, we have a list of committees that are countywide committees, and in some case, even larger than that area that we serve on. So...
Can I, can I make a request, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Can I, can I request that we flip-flop item A and B?
Well, or we could...
We have, the majority of the public is here on item B.
I know. You know what? We could put this at the end, too.
Okay.
Let's put this at the end of the agenda. We'll continue, we'll, we'll put this at the end of the agenda, because there's a lot of things to talk about. Okay, item B, we will go on to consideration of an ordinance adding section 8.07 of the Capitola Municipal Code regarding the reduction of single-use plastic and paper carryout bags, approving a resolution adopting a negative declaration, and make California Environmental Quality Act findings a first reading of an ordinance. Maybe we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, council members. So this evening before you, as you may recall back in July, you asked that we bring this ordinance before you after having done our environmental review. So we have completed our environmental review on the proposed ordinance to eliminate single-use plastic carryout bags and to reduce paper carryout bag usage. The purpose of the ordinance is, again, to eliminate the use of plastic carryout bags and reduce paper carryout. Looking for a result is to reduce the number of bags manufactured and the number of bags released into the environment and into our landfills. This applies to bags provided at the checkout counter, not ones that are used to contain loose items that are prior to checkout, like meat and so forth, and produce. And to also let you know that the city is prohibited from charging for plastic bags due to current state law. So again, to continue with the purpose of this ordinance before you, plastic bags pose environmental risk, and the plastics not biodegradable, and it's toxic to the marine environment. It breaks down into smaller pieces that are ingested by wildlife, and it is definitely a burden on the landfills. Paper bags are intended for one-time use as well. There's a high cost of manufacturing and transporting paper bags, and the manufacturing of paper bags has significant environmental impact as well. And what we're looking to do is encourage the use of reusable bags. I would like to review the elements of the Capitola ordinance, and then I know we have quite a few members of the public that would like to speak. First of all, it bans plastic carryout bags, and we're proposing to consider a fee on the paper bags. It applies to grocery stores and all retail businesses. It does not apply to restaurants. It does not apply to bags used to contain loose items prior to checkout. We're looking to establish a fee charged by the retail establishment, which does not go to the city for paper bags. It does not apply to low-income residents. And it would be implemented three months from the, following the second reading. This has been a regional effort to put forth this ban. Been working with the local communities, the county, the different cities. We've had a number of supporters come forward, the California Grocers Association, and I've listed a number of organizations as well, which I believe you have letters in your packet. I had a call today from the Grocers Association, which you saw the email that was forwarded to you, giving their whole hard support, because they would like a uniform approach to the bag and ban and the paper bag fee charge. And the recommended action before you is to approve the negative declaration and make the sequel findings, to pass the ordinance to a second reading, and also to provide direction on a fee for the paper carryout bags. And that actually concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there any questions right now?
Lisa, would you explain the 2.25 mil, I believe, bags heavier than 2.25 are allowed?
I wish I would have brought those in for you, actually. Yes, those are, they're actually pretty heavy, thick bags, and not necessarily like our demonstration over here.
You mean the bag lady?
That the bag lady has on, which is quite, you know, very thin and light and probably won't fly easily through the air. There's a much heavier, thicker, which is, could be reusable as well.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Sam.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Lisa, you mentioned that the ordinance would not apply to low-income individuals. I assume you meant that any fee that we would impose would not be imposed upon low-income individuals.
Yes, you're correct. And there's a definition in the ordinance of who would apply, who that would apply to.
Okay. How are low-income persons identified?
If they're using, that's, I know I'm not going to use the right terminology, but like food stamps, that type of thing, if that's how they're paying for their groceries.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Norton.
Lisa, I understand that the county's going to move to a 25-cent charge. Is that true?
I believe in March, they will, they currently charge 10 cents. It'll go to 25 cents. Watsonville is the same, they're 10 cents, and they'll also go to 25 cents.
Within the, within the city limits of Capitola, we've had a number of grocery stores that have taken on this project voluntarily. And have we got any feedback from them? How they've, what are their responses to what they've done so far?
Well, the response actually has been really positive, and I haven't had any complaints or any, anybody has gone back to using plastic. They've all continued on with their ordinance, with the voluntary, Nob Hill being our biggest, right? Has had not a problem with it. They haven't contacted me at all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Lisa, do we have any information on how successful we've been with, especially Nob Hill? We, I know we don't charge anything, the voluntary, there's no voluntary fee being charged for paper bags. They just eliminated the plastic. Are they finding a lot of success with people using reusable bags, bringing their own bags in? Do we have any data on that at all?
Actually, I think Save Our Shores has actually gone out there. They've conducted the data analysis for me, which I think they, you want to speak to that now? Sure.
Thank you. Laura Casa, Executive Director at Save Our Shores. I actually did stop in the Nob Hill last week just to sort of check in with them, and the person in front of me was using a reusable bag. But I also did speak with Mike Reese, the manager there, and I asked him to come tonight, but he didn't, he wasn't able to come, but he said, "You certainly can let the council know that since we did this, we have not seen any sort of significant increase in the number of paper bags." So, he's really saying that most people are bringing their reusable bags, so it's not costing him much more money. And I really do think those murals are helping remind people, so thank you for letting us put those up.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions? Then, this is a public hearing, so come up and give us your thoughts. And I'd also like, before you start, like to thank all the people that wrote us. We got a number of emails and letters from Green Cities, California, from the Director of Environmental Services for the City of San Jose, which has had strong environmental programs for many, many years, Central Coast Sanctuary Alliance, and Save the Waves Coalition, Save Our Shores, Marine Life Studies, Camp Sea Lab, Communities for Sustainable Monterey County, Pacific Grove, Sustainable Pacific Grove Steering Committee Co-Chair, so, and others. So, we've gotten a lot of really good comments and, and support for this. So, please come up if you'd like to speak on this. Good evening, welcome.
Hello again, Tim Goncharoff, County of Santa Cruz. I'm the person most responsible for leading the county's efforts on this, and I can share with you that when the county's ordinance first took effect on March 20th of this year, we got an excellent response. We did a lot of outreach, of course, to county businesses prior to the ordinance becoming effective, and saw almost universal compliance by the effective date. More than 400 county businesses stopped providing plastic bags at checkout, started charging for paper bags. It went very smoothly, very few problems at all. We went out and did surveys at numerous county locations with the assistance of Save Our Shores to see what the results had been, and we were very pleased and impressed that within just a month of the ordinance taking effect, more than 80% of shoppers were already bringing their own bags. So, it was a dramatic impact, and we estimate that in the first year, that represents a reduction of plastic bag use in the unincorporated county alone of 30 to 40 million bags, which will be repeated year after year. Since then, the county, as you probably know, passed a second ordinance extending the reach of this rule to restaurants. That will take effect on Earth Day of 2013, April 22nd, at which point, no business in the county of Santa Cruz will be able to provide plastic bags at checkout. We expect that to go smoothly as well and to see a further reduction in plastic bags in our creeks and rivers and on our beaches and in the bay, so we're pleased about that. And as was discussed earlier, on the anniversary of the initial ordinance, the charge for paper bags will go up to 25 cents. That's March 20th of 2013. As Mayor Harland mentioned, I also helped to coordinate efforts between the county and the local cities on measures of this type to try to ensure that businesses and consumers see consistent rules across the county to minimize confusion. A good example of that is probably the Styrofoam ordinance that was passed in the county in all four cities about four years ago, and which prohibited the use of Styrofoam in all food service. That's gone very well. It's been a great success, and the county's taken further measures in that regard, but we'll talk about that another time. We think that it would be an improvement to the current situation to have a similar common set of rules across the county. We get calls just about daily from businesses and shoppers saying, "So, what is the rule where I am? Am I in the county? Am I in the city? Which rule applies here?" I know the distinction between the unincorporated counties and the cities is very clear to all of us here. It's not always as clear to local residents and businesses. I want to add on a personal note, although I no longer live in Capitola, I did for many years. I raised my children here and have a great fondness for this city, and I hope on a personal level that you'll join the rest of us in approving this measure. And I'll stop talking there and respond to any questions if you have any for me.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for all your great work in the entire county.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, my name is Nathan Weaver. I'm the Oceans Advocate for Environment California, and I'm here tonight for our many thousands of members, both in the Bay Area and across the state. And just on a quick personal note, my grandparents live locally. I got to spend a week with them every summer, and one of the highlights of each year was getting to go to Capitola Beach. So, we strongly support this ordinance banning wasteful and unnecessary throwaway plastic bags. Plastic bags are a significant source of ocean pollution and a major threat to wildlife. Plastic floats, it doesn't biodegrade, it breaks down into smaller floating pieces at best, and this is forming a soup in central vortices of the world's oceans, 80 to 90% of which is plastic. And I know that might be hard to imagine, so I brought some of it with me tonight for everyone to see. The, in addition to adding to this, you know, soup, which is eaten by all kinds of filter feeders and birds and accumulates in their digestive tract, causing starvation and interfering with digestion, and plastic bags are a direct threat to sea turtles who eat them, mistaking them for jellyfish. There is a study a couple of years ago showing that 37% of leatherback sea turtles autotased since 1968 had plastic film in their stomach. It's an incredibly endangered animal. It's also our state symbol. Plastic bags also entangle birds and fish, interfering with escape from predators, sheltering, feeding, and can cause, you know, cause suffocation. Plastic bags have been found in the stomachs of both baleen and sperm whales, which is very surprising that these, you know, these animals that filter feed or that eat squid in the deep sea are still managing to ingest plastic bags. It speaks to how prevalent they are in our ocean. And we also think that the ordinance should include a fee on paper. Paper bags have their own environmental impacts from, they consume energy, which results in greenhouse gas emissions, they cause deforestation, and producing them pollutes the water. And that's why we think that reusable bags are the answer. This is a technology that, you know, predates recorded history and tested over the millennia since then. As long as you wash it once in a while, it's a, the perfect solution for carrying goods. And I wanted to speak very briefly about a couple of legal issues. I'm not an attorney, of course, but I read well. On the issue of Prop 26 relative to a fee on paper, the LA Superior Court has already looked on this regarding the LA Bag Ban Ordinance and found that it's not a tax unless collected by the government for revenue purposes. The term "charge" in Prop 26 must be interpreted to apply to revenue, and the stores were not the county's agent. So, as long as the store is collecting and retaining the fee, there's no Prop 26 issue according to this court. Regarding SEQA, this has been litigated thoroughly. Only one court has ever thrown out a bag ban under SEQA. In that case, Oakland, a city of over 400,000 people, relied on a categorical exemption and had no fee to mitigate the shift to paper bags. I'll finish briefly just by saying Manhattan Beach, a city larger than Capitola, did a negative declaration. They'd done their homework. They had a fee on bags that mitigated, you know, that let, encouraged consumers to use reusable bags instead, and that was upheld by the California Supreme Court. So, if I could just, I wanted to make sure the city attorney had a chance to look at the LA opinion, if I could approach, and thank you so much for considering this important ordinance to protect our ocean.
Thank you for coming here tonight. Who else would like to speak? Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Rudolph. It doesn't get any easier. Every time I stand up, it's really scary, even though you're not scary. I don't know why. I own a restaurant in Santa Cruz called Charlie Hong Kong, and I saw a picture in the paper of a baby sea otter trapped inside a plastic bag on its mother's chest, and that was it. No more plastic bags. I said, and this was before we started the discussion, it just, you know, got me as being a mother. And we have not used plastic bags in our restaurant, and we're mostly a to-go restaurant for almost two years. We figure we have prevented over 80,000 plastic bags from entering the environment. Thank you. And I would like to give each of you a to-go, so you'll have your bag that you can take. And I know you're not discussing the restaurant issue right now, but it has been so simple, seamless. Our customers have been very cooperative. In fact, I noticed that people were using their to-go reusable bags in grocery stores, but not for restaurants. So, I initiated a program called Bag for a Bowl, and if you bring your bag in, to develop the habit of bringing it, 10 times, the 11th time, you get a free bowl of food, and you each get a card with your first stamp. Thank you. So, I really want to encourage you. I think that, given that we are the stewards of this beautiful ocean that we live in, that it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Ariel Hunter.
Right in the mic.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to speak out really quickly. I'm not a Capitola resident. I'm a UC Santa Cruz student, and I'm also a marine biology major. So, this is stuff that really affects my workplace. It's like somebody attacking your office space, basically. These are things I study and things that I love and things I've loved for years. And I'm told on a daily basis by all the different professors that I have, who are great people, how many different horrible things are happening that I can't stop. There's going to be, you know, 30 years of global warming problems that we can't prevent. This is something we can, and as such, I think it's something that we really need to get behind. And so, I know I'm not Capitola, but I shop here all the time. I've got my reusable bags with me, and I think it's something that would be really, really beneficial. So, thank you.
Thanks a lot. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jim Littlefield, and I'm from the Santa Cruz chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. Tonight, I'm also going to represent Surfers Environmental Alliance and Save the Waves Coalition. Now, I believe that all three of these organizations have sent you our written comments, and I'm going to assume that you've read them. If that's so, then I'm not going to repeat all the reasons why, which are very good reasons. I'm simply going to ask you all, again, to please support this ordinance and vote it into local law. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Scott Molsom. I'd like to say two things. I've been diving in the bay out there since the early 1970s, and I'm a human being. When I see a plastic bag float by me, I have to look three times before I know it's not a jelly. So, I can only imagine with something with the brains of the turtle or fill in your, I mean, I don't think they can tell the difference at all. They don't stand a chance. The other thing I'd like to say is I'm not a resident of Capitola. I live 50 feet on the wrong side of the street up here. So, I'm in the unincorporated area, and when I go to shop out the right-hand side of my yard, I'm in a place where the plastic bag ban is in effect. And if I go out the left side, I'm in a place where it isn't yet. And that's confusing sometimes. So, if we could, if we could get both sides of my yard to do the same thing, that would be really cool. I'd really like it if you guys could, could move forward and pass this ban. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hello. My name's Martell Anderson, and I am a resident of Capitola. So is my husband, and my husband also works in Capitola as well. We totally love the ocean. We love spending time down at the beaches, walking our dog, and we hate seeing the pollution down there and the trash that we find. I've been a sanctuary steward with Save Our Shores since 2009. I have almost 600 hours of volunteer service, conducting, organizing, and reporting data back on beach cleanups specifically. And I personally have found thousands of plastic bags in our beautiful marine sanctuary, and I would support you in passing the bag ban. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Good evening.
Hello again. Laura Casa with Save Our Shores. I believe I have a few slides that I would just like to take the opportunity to show you within my 2 minutes and 53 seconds, if that's possible. And first off, I should start by thanking this council and the staff as well for all the time and effort you've put into this issue. I know you have a million things to work on, and I really appreciate that you spent the last couple of years working on this and that we're here tonight to discuss this. We also had 470 people sign our petition in support of the Capitola bag ban. To save you some time, I didn't ask them to line up behind me. Instead, I have those names to show their support because they're not here tonight. You all know the negative impacts of plastic bags, and many of the folks that spoke before me have mentioned that. I was hoping to just show you a few photographs because I believe that photographs say a million words. While we're trying to pull that up, though, I will talk to you a little bit about some of the data that we've collected. As someone mentioned before, we did go out in the county to see how many people were using reusable bags before the ordinance, and we found only about 10%. We went out 30 days later, and we found about 85% of shoppers were actually bringing reusable bags or using no bag at all. And then I thought, "Well, wow, that's, that was several months ago. Let me go out again last week and just check." So, I went out and stood in front of the Safeway in Soquel, and I was there for exactly an hour. I've got my little counter here, and I counted 78% of people that were bringing their own bags, so still right around that 80% number. So, thank you for these photos. We can start with that one there. So, so, bags can impact almost any kind of wildlife, and this is a picture of a bird with a, with a bag around its neck, certainly making it very difficult to eat and to move around. This is that photo that Carolyn was talking about. This photo was taken by a friend of ours. That is a baby otter in that bag, and the mother otter was screeching, trying to pull that bag off for about three minutes. Luckily, that baby otter survived, but how many haven't that we don't know about. Again, as Scott mentioned, there are turtles and other animals that eat plastic bags because as this picture shows, it's pretty hard to tell that that's a plastic bag floating there and not a jellyfish. Now, what's, what's another problem with plastic bags is that they blow easily. So, even if they're not in the ocean yet, these bags are getting pretty close to getting there. This picture was taken the day after our newest neighbor at the Capitola Mall moved in, and I don't think they'd want this marketing of their new store on our beach, but that's where it's ending up. I did have a couple graphs on here. It doesn't look like they made it. I'll just let you know real quickly. The bag monster is here to represent the 532 bags that we counted coming out of the Capitola Mall in one hour on Tuesday evening. That graph's a little hard to see, but we went to five different entrances to the mall, and we counted, and the total was this, this many bags in just one hour. So, we know that's happening here. We need to do something about it. So, I encourage you to move forward on this. We're certainly here to help you along the way in any way we can, and I've really used up all my time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we take a look at all those bags?
Did you do a dance for us?
Can you turn around? Wow. That's, that's amazing.
And do, clarify, that was in one hour?
And to clarify, that was in one hour?
Yeah.
Really? Oh, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Rachel Kippen. I'm program coordinator for Save Our Shores. Thank you so much for taking the time to consider my thoughts tonight and also for considering this bag ban, which I fully support. As Laura Casa mentioned, I'm representing actually 500 single-use plastic bags. I know I look entirely ridiculous, and I think that it's ridiculous that 500 plastic bags are used by the average American citizen every single year. Imagine me plus, what was it, 42 more, 42 more bags, what we counted, what our volunteers counted on Monday night outside of Capitola Mall. So I think we have the opportunity to really change how much, how much waste we're putting into the environment. On a personal note, I know we've talked a lot about sea turtles. I'm originally from Hawaii. Sea turtles are my favorite animal. They got me into this field and into believing that we need to protect the marine environment. The leatherback sea turtle, the California state marine reptile, my favorite animal on this planet. I haven't seen it yet. It migrates annually into Monterey Bay. It lived on this earth at the same time as dinosaurs the size of a school bus, right? So that's the predators it used to face. Now the predator is me. I don't really think that's fair. I think that's a tragedy. I think we can change that. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. While I applaud this step and really congratulate people who are working so hard on this, I like to look at the source. What corporations are producing these plastics and spewing them out? Petrochemical corporations, right? And part of the plastic, I, I wanted to thank Nathan Weaver for detailing some of the horrors of the plague of plastic. But floating in these gyres in the ocean, which I understand are about twice the size of the continental United States, real horror story, are other forms of plastic, all kinds of plastic, including cell phones and just tons of plastic. And I understand there's more plastic in the ocean than phytoplankton, which produces most of the earth's oxygen and is at the bottom of the food chain. I also remember pictures that were shown of albatross birds over here at Capitola Cafe when the authors, who had studied the albatross and taken many pictures, were noting this bird that used to come to where they were camped out, and it died. And when they cut it open, it just had bottle caps and all kinds of plastic in it, and of course, it couldn't absorb its food. These are endocrine-disrupting chemicals, also causing hormonal abnormalities. So the question is, unfortunately, is what can be done to stop the production? Because these corporations privatize the profit and they socialize the costs. So we are scrambling around picking up what they're producing. And I remember when I lived in LA County in the 19, well, I was born there in '42, but I remember going to Altadena Dairy. We got our milk in glass bottles, and one day I went there, and they were all in plastic. We didn't vote on that. And the horrors of plastic, it's how do we stop the corporations and the corporate power from spewing this stuff out? And this is a small amount. I mean, I'm grateful for the visual here of the dangers of this, but it's just, it's just very disturbing. By what authority do corporations have the right to pollute our planet and, and destroy the whole ecosystem? So thank you for what you're doing, but the overall picture is a much larger picture, and we, we have to get to the structure of a system that promotes pollution by corporations for their profit.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Matt Q. I'm the co-chair of Surf Rider Foundation here in Santa Cruz. I grew up in the jewel box, learned how to surf out here, love Capitola. Just wanted to mention, as Jim said, that, you know, based on the letters we've sent in, we are in favor of this ordinance, and just to be brief, really hope tonight we can pass this and make this law.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Then I'll...
I just wanted to let you know that Rachel was kind enough to let us photograph her, so that photograph will be part of the administrative record, and hopefully, under the rubric, that a picture is worth a thousand words.
Thank you.
Very convincing to any judge that looks at it.
It's a great visual. It's, that's really, really great, yeah. That's great. Then I'll close the public hearing with some, oh, please, please come up. Good evening.
Good evening. Could you hand these out to City Council members? And in addition, I've got copies from any of the people here. Okay.
Please speak into the microphone.
Yes, I will. My name is Richard Wickowitz. I'm a physicist who, I worked with NASA, and I'm retired now. I've been in this area for 47 years. I've lived directly on the beach for 24 years, and I know this bay very well. So far, you've been hearing from dozens upon dozens of organizations promoting this ban. Is it not strange that there is not one opposing viewpoint? I find this mind-boggling. What this is, is really, basically, this is a crusade with a lot of emotion and very little scientific data. So what I want to do is present a dose of scientific reality and data. On page one, we presume that we're not going to increase the amount of paper bags used, but that's not true. We're going to use a huge additional amount, as I will show on page two. This is too important to leave to emotion. It's too important not to do the science. On page two, you will see that the bag bans have been failing miserably. Whatever reports you have of 80% compliance, they do not exist. On the second page, you see the amount of compliance. I've been surveying this with other people for two years, from November to November 2012. It's been scientifically conducted, great detail, the highest percentage of usable bags that we've ever seen coming out of any store. It's been 42%, not 80%. The lowest percentage was only 7.7%, and the average was only 22%. San Francisco passed this ban seven years ago, yet at this point, it's a miserable failure. They have no way of really measuring what they're doing. These data cover a great deal of it. The Whole Foods in San Francisco, for example, 14.9%. There's a Safeway in Palo Alto, very environmental community, 23%. These are impossible figures to deal with. This is going to be an environmental disaster, and we have to look at the real data. Nobody is doing this, and nobody is looking at the real science. Now, when are we going to do this? The bay isn't going to be saved by emotion. The ocean isn't going to benefit from all kinds of anecdotal presentations. These are anecdotes.
Thank you very much.
These aren't science.
Would anyone else like to speak? Then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. And who would like to start? Dennis?
I'd be happy to. The Nob Hill, the Nob Hill store about six months ago volunteered to initiate their own bag ban. And at the time, Save Our Shores went in, and they actually put a sign on the outside. And we're, we're talking about social change here, where people changed their habits of how they do things. And it's usually not something that evolves over a short period of time. But in their case, they've actually, from what I hear, have had amazing, amazing results in that if you, if you say that you've had no increase in the number of paper bags that have gone out of the store, and you're not giving out any plastic bags at all, that would tell me that you've already initiated social change before we even pass an ordinance or put it in place here. So is it working here in our community? That's the best example I can, I can give you. Whole Foods and New Leaf have been doing this for a number of years, and their customer, their customers have actually been induced to that social change over a period of time. So that was easier for them to make that transition. But, but I would not say that for, for Nob Hill. And, and that, it shows me two, tells me two things. One is, it's a very acceptable practice that we're trying to initiate here in our community. Number two, it is not that difficult to make that change. And number three is, is that we will see results. We've already seen results without even initiating a bag ban. So there needs to be consistency through the county. Whatever, the practices that the county are doing now, and I'm not speaking about restaurant bans, I'm talking about strictly supermarket bans, or what we have in our, in our ordinance, along with this 25-cent charge. It's easy for people to understand out there at this point, and they can see it all the way across the board. What, right now, the supermarkets are actually giving out paper bags without charging anyone, so it doesn't seem to be a financial burden to them one way or the other. So with that statement, would it not be possible to, to ask that the local supermarkets actually consider giving that 25 cents back to the community, in such as in a form to an agency that does beach cleanup or, or environmental cleanup? And so it works as a promotion point for them, as well as for, an exception by a community why they are paying for the 25 cents, paying the 25 cents for their bags when they come into the store. And so this, the county moving to 25%, I support that. I support staff recommendations as, as outlined in their report, and that's my statement. Thank you.
Who would like to speak next? Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. My only regret is that we haven't done this sooner, and the reasons why, I think everybody understands, because of the threat of litigation and, and previously, the city not being in the position to be able to stand up to it. City Capitola has always been the leader in environmental affairs and in policies such as this one. We led in styrofoam, and I think it's just unfortunate that we're having to follow here, but I think follow we must and should, and that is the right thing to do. I think the science here is actually, as presented, is pretty clear. Even if only the average use of reusable bags is 22%, that's 22 more percent than probably was the case five years ago. And it doesn't mean that we have to stop at the proliferation of paper bags. If those are a huge environmental issue, maybe that becomes the next matter that we need to deal with. This just doesn't end. I think we should all still start to consider usage in, in the restaurants, as demonstrated here by one restaurateur who's taken the lead in that effort, Charlie Hong Kong's. And we should be moving that direction. I think it's pretty clear that plastic is a detriment to marine wildlife. It is a pollution. It fills our landfills. We should be moving in many ways to reduce the amount of single-use substances. Reuse, recycle. And so that's my position. I wholly support the ban as presented this evening. On the matter of the fee, I'm, would like to see it be 10 cents, enlisted at 10 cents. I don't think in every respect we need to match what the fee, the amount of the fees is, as being applied in the rest of the county. I think most of the evidence shows that 10 cents is sufficient to encourage the consumer to switch to at least, if not reusable, but to the plastic bag. And so those are my thoughts and positions, and thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Councilmember Tumini?
Sure. I, I fully appreciate the gentleman who had the opposing viewpoint on, the problem with plastic is it's highly visible. The pollution from paper bags is not. Having lived for several years across the bay from a paper mill, I defy anyone to tell me that paper is not toxic to produce. And while, you know, I feel, part of me feels this is slightly misdirected, and that what we're really trying to do is legislate behavioral change, and that is people not taking plastic bags and letting them loose. That's the behavioral change we're trying to legislate. And we're trying to legislate it by removal of the ability to not throw or recycle those plastic bags. Not always the best way to legislate, so I'm a little torn. I, I am in favor, first of all, let me just speak a little bit about voluntary change. We were amazing in voluntary banning of polystyrene. We literally removed it from the face of Capitola just voluntarily, and then we followed it up with some legislation, and it worked. We've done just about the same thing with plastic through the efforts of Lisa Murphy. We have many of the major users of carryout plastic bags not using them. And we have some, you know, for a beginning, I'm looking at, from the same gentleman, some pretty impressive stats, you know, Safeway SoCal, 34%. Safeway isn't always high on the list in everyone's mind as far as environmental sensitivity, but that's pretty significant, and it speaks a lot about our community. And this is, and I'm seeing the same thing happen in Capitola without a legislated ban. I would go along with a ban on plastic bags. I'll go with that. But I am adamantly opposed to charging anyone for paper. The argument that it infills the cost of using paper by the grocery stores, anyone who thinks the grocery stores haven't been charging us for paper in the cost of our foods for the last 100 years is rather naive. No one needs to pay Safeway for paper bags. They got it covered. Trust me. I, I don't think that 10 or 25 cents is a huge deterrent. You know, if you fill up a grocery bag with $20, $30 worth of food, which is about all it takes to fill up a grocery bag, the quarter's not going to slow anybody down who's too lazy to bring their reusable bag in. So while yes, I'd be, I'd be in favor of this, because it follows the voluntary one that we have in place already, I would not be in favor of it if it's accompanied by a charge for the paper bags. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Ed?
Well, I think it's pretty clear to everybody that the plastic bag is not liked. The plastic is not working for us. The problem is, is that the, the solution, the alternative, the paper bag, doesn't work either. As the gentleman mentioned in his, his little paper he brought us, the, you know, we're looking at the plastic bag. We can all look at the girl in the front with the 500 bags, and we see it. And the fact is, is that the paper bag is a big proponent of methane gas, which is going to, is contributing to the greenhouse gases. We don't see it, so we're not going to deal with it. The real solution here, as was mentioned, is it's a behavioral problem. We like the convenience of the plastic bag. We like the fact that they'll give us a paper bag if we don't use the plastic bag, and the real answer is the reusable bag. I have to tell you that even though we try, and I commend Hong Kong Restaurant here for passing these out, because it's the way we have to go, but even when you pass these out, people choose not to use them. As part of my campaign for running for this election, I passed out over 1,000 of these bags, and I have yet to see one in the city yet when I go to the store. So it's, it is a behavioral problem, and I think that, I feel very strongly, and I got a few statistics... statistics here. There was a big document we had, over 500 pages, that listed how this program's been working. It's been up going since 2002 in Taiwan and other places. In Ireland, they did this program, they charged them 22 euro, which was 30 cents. And in a matter of one year, they got 90 percent compliance. And that's what it's going to take. It's going to take an impact. We are a society that will pay 10 cents, or we are a society that will take it for free. If the price is 25 cents, is what I favor at this point, which is what a lot of cities have taken, because they feel that after a year of doing 10 cents, it's not working, so they're raising the price. If we really want to stop the problem, and I think we all know we want to stop the plastic in the ocean, it's horrible. And it's going to take a big effort to do that. The one thing I want to commend Capitola on is, Save Our Shores picked up 35,000 bags in 905 events, which means they averaged 38 bags per event. Whereas when they came to Capitola, they picked up 200 bags in 23 events, which means nine bags per event. So the fact that you mentioned here was that Capitola is good at policing itself. The idea is not to punish Capitola residents, but the idea is, as was mentioned here, we are behind the curve. Other cities have already adopted this, and if we want to lunge forward, it's going to be with a strict rule. And the strict rule is going to be making a change. So I strongly support passing the initiative, but with the minimum of a 25 cent fee.
Thank you very much. I'm also a strong supporter of this ban and agree with Sam that it's too bad we're following rather than leading, but that's the way some things go. And sorry for all the time it's taken us to deal with this, and thank you all for your patience in coming here several times to discuss this. But we wanted to do the negative declaration, and we wanted to do the research, and we wanted to cover our bases in case we end up in court over this, and we are hoping that that's not going to be the case. But I think it's a really important step forward for us, and also to try to get people, just to keep them in their cars. I'd really like to put out a newsletter pretty soon to publicize our discussion and our direction, and encourage people to keep them in their cars, which a lot of people do anyway. They just keep them in the backseat of their car, so that when they go in the store, they take them, when they have them, or keep them in their trunk. Or now, when they go into a takeout restaurant, to think about that bag and start forming that habit, because that's really significant also. So I support, I think, 10 cents at this point to start, and I think that might sit a little bit better with people than a quarter. Of course, not that much, dime is not that much, but I'd like to follow the lead of the county and the city of Santa Cruz, and I think it's best when we can have uniform ordinances. It's less confusing for people. And the county certainly will be at 25 cents soon, but if we start out that, we can take a look at it in a year, see what we want to do. Maybe we'll want to leave it the same, maybe we want to increase it. But it is a wonderful program, and it's worked really well, and I'm really happy that Lisa has done such a wonderful job on this and working with her colleagues throughout the county.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Okay.
That the city adopt an ordinance adding section 8.07, single-use plastic and paper carryout bag reduction, to reduce single-use plastic and paper carryout bags, approve a resolution adopting a negative declaration, and make California CEQA findings, along with a 25 cent fee for taking out paper bags.
Is there any possibility that we can separate that? Because we do have three separate items, and I think that we're only providing direction on the fee, and if we could take that as a separate motion, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, we can do that.
Is that okay? Is that the motion maker? Okay.
So are we separating the fee from it and just adopting the negative declaration?
And negative deck and the first reading.
Okay.
And the language, would someone like to second it?
I'll second it.
The language for the audience says that, on the resolution, the city council hereby finds that it is considered the negative declaration, together with the initial study, public comments, the summary of comments and responses, and finds that the negative declaration and supporting documents reflects the city council's independent judgment and analysis as required by Public Resources Code 21082.1. City council finds on the basis of the whole record before it, including the initial study, comments received and responses, that there's no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment. And the city council hereby adopts the negative declaration, finds that the initial study has been completed in compliance with CEQA, the state CEQA guidelines and local procedures adopted pursuant thereto. Discussion on the motion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Councilmember Vatorf?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
And Mayor Harland?
Aye. Someone like to make another motion?
So my, the second motion would be that we provide direction that we include a 25 cent fee for paper carryout bags.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Story?
No.
Councilmember Vatorf?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
No.
Mayor Harland?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much for being here.
I lumped out two important things. Number one, these surveys are going to continue, especially at the
We're finished with this item, sir. We're finished with this item, sir. If you'd like to email us, you're welcome to email us.
Carry on.
We're moving on to the next item.
Okay. You might consider how much of an embarrassment this will be.
Item number C is a report on Measure O, the permanent city sales tax increase of one quarter of 1 percent. Jamie, did you want to start out and then have the finance director talk about this? Or are you going to handle it?
Madam Mayor, I was planning on giving the presentation this evening.
Okay, thank you.
So as the council is aware, on November 6th, the voters approved Measure O. Measure O is a quarter cent permanent sales tax in the city of Capitola that's projected to generate around $1 million a year. In the ballot language that the voters considered, they identified priorities in the ballot were disaster recovery, maintenance of general services within the city, and public safety and street improvements. One of the chief priorities for me as the city manager, and as identified in the ballot language, is to reestablish the city's reserve levels. Currently, we have about $800,000 between our emergency and contingency reserves combined, and our policy funding level for those two funds would be about $1.8 million. Those emergency reserve levels are set in city's fiscal policies at 5 percent of our general fund expenditures for the emergency reserves and 10 percent of the general fund expenditures for the contingency reserves. In our recently completed benchmark study, which evaluated similar cities around the state, one of the key findings that came out of it for me, at least key in the sense that it gave us some guidance and some information where we weren't doing so well, was that we had the lowest level of reserves as compared to the benchmark cities. So I'm making a recommendation to you tonight. Number one, as a first step, is that we increase our policy funding level in our contingency reserve, primarily due to the timing of the receipt, between the receipt of revenues and the expenditures that the city makes, which the fact chair made a presentation to earlier this evening, an increase from 10 to 15 percent in our contingency reserves. And then again, in our emergency reserves, I think as the flood in 2011 pointed out, we are certainly not a city that's immune from natural disasters. And frankly, I think that given our proximity to a lot of significant natural features, the ocean, the river, the wildlands, upland, which are certainly susceptible to fire, I would recommend that a prudent emergency reserve at 10 percent would be a good idea. So with those two changes, were you to make them, rather than being $1 million underfunded, our reserve levels would be $2.2 million underfunded. And so I would recommend that over the next several years, we establish a plan of around $450,000 a year into those accounts, which would get us a fully funded reserve by 2017. Another identified priority was for street improvements for Measure O. Due to the economic downturn, the loss of the redevelopment agencies, our amount of funding the city has been able to put into street maintenance has significantly decreased in recent years. Dr. Pavement Management Index has decreased by seven points in the last several years. That's the index that we do every couple of years of the overall condition of the city's streets. Multiple road and street maintenance projects that people have identified, the council has identified as priorities for a long time, have been delayed. So what I'm recommending is that we put in place an allocation of about half a million dollars a year of Measure O funding into our streets and roads and our public street Our public works crews have been severely, have been significantly decreased, staffing levels due to the economic downturn. We have 25 percent fewer staff in the public works crews than we did at historic levels. Overall, demand for our public works crews are increasing and not decreasing. We have more demand for services throughout the city. And one of the key things I think that we could do here is hire another maintenance worker to get started this summer and help out, and then look down the road, probably in 2015, to hire an additional maintenance worker to bring us up to a fully staffed public works crew level to take care of our streets and take care of our parks, take care of our public spaces. And then lastly, my last recommendation is that, our police department has felt hit due to the state takeaways and high demands. One of the goals that the police chief and I have had is to try to find ways, in a cost-effective way, to bring more staff to bear during peak times that we have in the city, particularly during the evenings in the summer, summer weekends in the village, a time in which we have often seen significant events, and we would like to put in place a sort of village patrol program that could work during the summer. In addition, we're looking at, trying to bring another CSO, CSO, Community Service Officer onboard. It would help with a lot of sort of the municipal code violations, municipal code issues that we see in the village, smoking regulations, dogs on the beach, skateboarding, things that we hear a lot about sometimes in the village, and have actually a CSO dedicated to the village that would also continue to help out with our parking enforcement. So with those changes, I provided in the staff report a table between now and 2017. 2017 is an important date because Measure D, the existing temporary sales tax, will expire that year. In addition, the city's pension obligation debt payments expire in that year. So at that point, the city's fiscal picture will change significantly, and I wanted to give us a multi-year projection of what this could look like were the council to make these allocations. Now, what it would mean overall is that by 2017, we would have fully funded reserves, we would have spent more than $2 million of Measure O money on street maintenance, $130,000, $1,000 going into the police department, $360,000 going into the public works crew. But I also want to say, we don't need to worry too much about those out years at this point. Those out year decisions will be made by the council at the time that you're adopting those budgets. Really, what I'm looking for tonight is action and direction about what we'll do this year and this year's budget. And what we're proposing to do, the first thing is, at the mid-year budget report, as we discussed at recent meetings, we closed out last year with a fund balance. And we would recommend transferring $200,000 of fund balance into the reserve accounts at the mid-year. And then in addition, make $150,000, excuse me, $150,000 allocation of the Measure O funding into the reserves, and then $104,000 into the CIP, $6,000 for PD staff to get the village policing program going, and $10,000 to bring a crew member on before the summer. Now, an important question is, what would $104,000 and what would next year's projects look like on the CIP? And Steve is here, and he can talk a little bit about the proposed projects that we were putting, suggesting for the CIP.
So the spreadsheet here is the same that's in your packet, a different format. In order to, with $104,000 between now and June of 2013, there's a limit on what projects we can get out on the street, and I'm recommending that we do another $100,000 slurry seal with that. We did one in the fall, it was quite successful, excuse my voice. So I proposed, and I went back and kind of looked at the neighborhoods we've done recently, which ones are the longest out, and I recommend that we do a slurry seal project in Cliffwood Heights, the Riverview Terrace area, and on Francisco Circle. That's something we could get out and probably have on the ground by, before the summer starts in 2013. In 2013, 14, we have about $530,000, Jamie's recommending, go into CIP. I've identified projects that have been delayed here, more than necessarily straight paving projects. The Claire Street Traffic Calming, which will repave Claire Street, is something that's been on the books. We were ready to try and finalize it when the RDA went away and we lost $300,000 worth of funding. So I refunded that project here in 1314. Recommend a smaller slurry seal project that year, 49th Avenue area and Claire's Loop, which is in need of it. And then we're kind of pocketing some money for the Bay Avenue paving, which is the area from about Oak Street to Monterey, where we would do some repaving and put in some streetscape elements. Let's see, and then Park Avenue sidewalks, we have $150,000 go there. That is a grant match that we have for putting sidewalks from Monterey to Cabrillo. We have a $300,000 grant from the Regional Transportation Commission that we committed to providing the matching grant of $150,000, so I've funded that in here. And then just looking up one more year in 2013, 14, 15, I think the next project that we've deferred the longest would be paving Park Avenue, the upper end from Highway 1 back to Cabrillo, and then do another citywide slurry seal project. Certainly, this doesn't pave everything, you know, we can't do it all in one year. I've kind of tried to mix in doing something in the residential, mainly slurry seals in the residential neighborhoods, and addressing projects that we've delayed the longest at this time.
Mike?
Steve, I know the long-awaited undergrounding of the power lines on Bay Avenue. Have we focused on Bay Avenue? Is that going to be our target for those Rule 30?
Yeah, I actually had an email just two days ago from the PG&E contact. She gave me some breakdowns of it, I'm trying to verify those costs, and it looks like it will be Bay Avenue intersect, Bay-Capitol Ave intersection toward Monterey. I'm not exactly sure how far we'll get in that direction.
I'm only questioning that because we should probably coordinate paving Oak to Monterey on Bay Avenue with the underground.
Yeah, I think the paving we're mainly going to focus on is Oak to Cap Ave.
Oh.
And then beyond that, we're looking at some
Hence, the small dollar amount. I was asking, you know, Oak to Monterey.
Yeah, we couldn't do that.
Okay. And this is a question for both staff. This is not, I mean, we had plans in the coming budgets, even without Measure O, to fund a certain amount of CIP. I would hope that out of respect for Measure O and the citizens who voted for it, that this $500,000 we're doing into CIP is above and beyond what we would have budgeted for ordinarily. I don't want Measure O to replace what we were going to spend on CIP to begin with, which, you know, starts to speak to our intentions.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Termini, you're exactly right. Recall that last year, what we had ended up doing was we had unbudgeted the CIP allocations into the reserves and the community groups, and basically gave the council a pot of money to make those allocations. In our budget that we adopted last year, we adopted a two-year budget with the main year and then the proposed second year. So in our proposed second-year budget that we adopted last year, we had $300,000 to be split between those three uses. I would argue that, several things. Number one is that I think Measure O is going to take care of the reserves. So really, all we're talking about is allocating the $300,000 between the community groups and the CIP. And in addition, the good news is, is that, as I reported at the last meeting, our sales tax numbers and our TOT figures have been stronger than last May when we were last projecting them. So I would anticipate that when we do the budget next year, there certainly could be some pieces of down, bad news, which I don't anticipate, that the $300,000 to allocate between those two will grow. So that was a very long way of saying is, I do anticipate that you will have some additional resources to put into the CIP beyond just this.
Thank you.
Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. And Steve, I wanted to ask, and And Steve, I wanted to ask, and, well, if you have a sense of with these projects that you're proposing, how that would impact our Pavement Management Index, our PMI? And, because, and hopefully you would be bringing that to us, and we would maybe use that as a gauge of how well we're doing, how well we're spending the Measure O dollars.
Yeah, we could certainly bring a full report, probably with the budget, or I could do it sooner if the council would like, on the pavement management. But in general numbers, $500,000 a year in any pavement project, including slurry seals, will slightly increase our pavement condition. We should really be targeting more than $700,000, but $500,000 keeps us even and moves us ahead slightly.
Well, that's good to hear. And that we may want to look at being able to basically maybe get ahead instead of just standing still with the PMI. So I think at staff discretion of when would be a good time to kind of bring those numbers back to us.
Okay.
When we're looking at these. Jimmy, I had a question about the chart on the second page of the staff report, and particularly the 2013 estimated revenues from Measure O funding. When is that scheduled to actually take effect?
Councilman Story, the 2013, the ordinance takes effect, I believe it's 90 days from adoption by the voters, which we believe that that means that we get one quarter's worth of payments, so effectively 25% of the total amount.
90 days would take us until about February, and so...
Right. I understand. I think that that was the strict language. I think the way the Board of Equalization is, they work on a quarter basis. So that's what I understand from the Board of Equalization, is that we would be getting the payment for the three-month period.
So this $270,000 is actually a relatively conservative estimate of what we may realize in the year ending 2013?
I think it's as good an estimate, I wouldn't call it a conservative estimate at this point. I think it's as good an estimate as I can give you for 2013, unless I'm incorrect and the tax does, we do get a month of accrual earlier than I was thinking.
Okay. I also had a follow-up question, Mayor, if I may, on the police department staffing. And Rudy, you know, I wasn't trying to call you up here, but it says that we want to hire a community service operator, maybe for the summer nights. I fully support that. I'm just wondering, I mean, the $35,000 seems to be a modest, annual amount, seems to be modest. Is that sufficient to have an additional community service operator?
Councilmember Story, we're fortunate enough that we've got a current employee. We would be able to reclassify a position without really going outside and hiring a new person. And that person is currently a full-time parking attendant who's really done a great job for us, and so it would actually be more beneficial for us to go that route, and this way it would be easier to train the person. They're familiar with the organization inside and out, and it would be more cost-effective to do it that way for us.
So there's three components that you're seeing up there, that are going into the PD costs. One is a program to bring in temporary extra help on summer evenings in the village, to have folks trained officers in the village at times when we know that there can be incidents. The second cost is a small marginal uptick between reclassing from a PEO to CSO, Parking Enforcement to Community Service Officer. And then the third component is, we put some hours in there in Parking Enforcement to backfill potentially, if we need it, to the responsibilities of the PEO who's being elevated to the Community Service Officer. One of the things that we're realizing is that, and Community Service Officers do have Parking Enforcement responsibilities, and this individual is aware that they would be responsible for continuing to do that, as well as doing municipal code enforcement. One of the things we're coming to grips with is that we're going to have, well, potentially, if the council approves the temporary parking lot in Lower Park Cove, a lot more parking spaces to enforce, as well as hopefully some new technology available to do the enforcement as we transition away from the single stall meters to parking the pay stations. So we're aware that there could be some changes in the PEO, so PEO staffing, the Parking Enforcement officers, so we have a little bit of an allowance in there, but I think as we move forward, we may be, we may end up adjusting that, but this is our best guess at this time.
Okay, it seems to be a modest guess, based on my experience here, of what things cost, staffing cost, and so I would just hope you'd be realistic. I fully support, you know, this effort of what you're trying to accomplish. And maybe there's some other general fund monies you're thinking to adding, it's not just the Measure O dollars. But I think, starting out, we should be very realistic about what we're going to need, so then we can allocate it and cover this money to make sure that it's going to the designated purposes.
We do have a budgeted position, a 900-hour employee for parking, and so we would be going from two CSOs and three full-time parking, to three CSOs, two full-time parking, and the 900-hour employee. And so instead of going out and hiring a new person, which would increase the cost, we're actually getting the benefit of the talents that we have inside.
Okay, great, thank you, Mayor.
And while you're here, I still hope that if we're going to have any employees that are going to be off for any extended period of time, that we could try to creatively find a way to backfill that, so that we don't end up with a situation like we have before, where we didn't receive enough revenue, as much revenue as we had in previous years because one of the Parking Enforcement Officers was out, and we could have used that revenue. So I hope there's a way that we can figure that into this at some point. I mean, you never know when someone's going to be out for a while, but that we keep that in the back of our mind, so that we can be ready to provide that source of revenue that's so useful to us.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor.
Would you like to go next, Dennis?
Just a little clarification, because it looks like the extra money is going to go, we're going to upgrade the existing parking attendant to a CSO.
That's correct.
And then replace him with the part-time. And that's all based on the plan that we're going to be originally getting rid of the meters with the pay stations, but in the meantime, that means that the pay stations aren't going to have anybody, or the meters aren't going to have anybody doing them until we hire that part-time person. I'm concerned about the meters not being emptied and on a regular basis, because there's a gap here, unless you have a plan.
We are actually in the process of hiring that person. We're very close, and before we make that transition, that person will be teamed up with the person who's going to be reclassed, so we will have a short period of overlap there, so we don't miss any of that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Dennis?
During the last year, we're addressing flood issues and relocation of Pacific Cove, we actually, as a city, incurred $2.5 million in debt. We're in discussion right now of incurring another million dollars in debt to put in transformation to a lower parking lot. Yet, there's nothing in here that addresses the city's debt issue in this, and I think we came across the public that the reason that we were going for Measure O was to deal with issues, financial issues that the city had, which incurred because of flooding. Well, that is one of them. You know, this is not, this is something that the city's never dealt with, with having that kind of debt. Usually, when that kind of debt comes along, you're actually using that for construction of a project or something. This is not, this has actually been, and much say, non-productive money that we put out there. So I was always under the impression that that loan would be short-term, and that, yes, we are addressing the reserve issue and putting money in there, which we told the public we're going to do. I think we need to do something to address that debt and pay it down quicker than we normally would, and I don't see anything coming from the new Measure O money that addresses that, any debt occurrence that we have with that happening.
If I might, Madam Mayor, Mr. City Manager, preempt you a little bit, because I know where you're jumping to. There's, the only flaw in this chart here is that it only goes to the point at which we fulfill the reserves. Remember, this is a non-sunset sales tax measure, that after we infill the reserves, we will not have that $450,000 to increase reserves, because reserves will be at the level we have set them at. You understand what I'm saying? So if we get past there and, you know, do all the math, there will be money to, after 2017, to retire the debt. Unless we wanted to take a little more time to bring the reserves up to 3 million, I don't know, but it does, and I understand 2017, other things take place, but there's almost a balance that takes place between our pension obligation bond, our retirement of Measure P or D.
D.
So remember that 450, after we get it up to 2.2 million, that 450 is no longer required out of the Measure O funds. So we do have some, you know, we have some foundation there. But I'm with you 100% on retiring debt.
Yeah, and the thing is, is that, in a personal account, I would not go borrow more money when I'm putting money into my reserves. You know, I would not do that. You know, there's certainly a security issue we all like to have with the city, but at the same time, I think we should concentrate on paying that debt down. I don't think we need to have it on our books, and I would like to see a portion here going towards paying that debt down, particularly if we're talking about putting another million dollars in this project. I know we get a lower interest rate at that time.
And I just want to clarify, isn't that the debt service or the Park Cove remodeling was already included in our general fund?
The 2.4 million for the Park Cove closure was included in the projected budget?
Yeah, in our, yeah, in our current budget. So, yeah, we're managing that within our current budget. And so Dennis, you're suggesting that we should maybe use some of this money to pay down that debt? Well, then that money's freed up, and we can just shift it over here to do this work.
Well, what I would suggest here is that we take a little longer to pay our reserves down and start paying some debt obligation down at the same time.
I have a slightly contrary opinion, even though I understand the spirit of it and I'm with you. I am very much concerned about the year 2017. I think we all should keep that in focus, and I think getting the 3 million in there, like we promised before 2017, is important. And to your point, we've all gone through numerous mid-year reports where we have 2, 3, $400,000 more than we thought we would have. I think that's the time to do some accelerated payments.
Isn't that what we're hearing now, though, Mike? Aren't we hearing that from staff that we have, we're having, there is money beyond what we...
Not yet. At the mid-year report, it will be, but I think that's the time, you know, we need to keep it in mind, because we've all gone through meetings where, at 11 o'clock, we have a mid-year report, and there's an extra half million dollars, and, you know, in 90 seconds, we spend a half million dollars on good things, but not a lot of thought goes behind it sometimes. So maybe in February, when we get the mid-year report, and we see that extra money, and we're disposed to deal with it, that's the time to push it into that, and I'd be, I could vote for it now.
Jimmy?
Madam Mayor, one point I would like to make, and this is the slide that we put up when the fact chair was speaking, is that where we are today is, we're very close to having a cash flow problem in the city to carry through sort of the lean times, which is actually right about today or tomorrow, is the lowest point in our fiscal year. And I certainly appreciate that sentiment, and frankly, I'll tell you, as a city manager, it pains me to have a million dollars sitting in the bank earning virtually nothing and paying, even though we have a very good rate with Santa Cruz County Bank, and I think we will be able to refinance it to a range of the fours, it's tough to watch that, to be on the wrong side of that interest rate. But at the same time, I also would recommend that we get started on refunding those reserves, so that we are in a position to be more resilient to economic downturns, to natural disasters, and when we get out to those further out years, I think that that is the time, and believe me, as your city manager, as soon as I think that there's the opportunity to not, to not lose money in that transaction, I will be making the recommendation to start paying down the debt.
I agree with you, Dennis. I'd like to start paying our debts off sooner rather than later. I'd love to see some containers for recycling in the village if we do start this program and put a little time and effort into that. I know people throw trash in it, and we would have to have our crew sort it out, but, you know, you can get the new kind now that, you know, they have small openings, you can't stuff a pizza box in there, and you can only put cans and bottles in there pretty much. If people put little papery things in there, our crews can clean that out, you know, we're proper equipment and protective equipment and so forth. So I'd really like us to do more of that this summer. It's, you know, at least try it, and, you know, then if it turns out to be a big failure it does, but I'd like to do that and have someone work on that. Someone like to make a motion?
Public hearing, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing, and would anyone like to speak on this, the report on Measure O and the recommended uses for the money? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Nelson Westman, I'm a resident of Riverview Drive, a street that has been in dismal repair for years and years. I'm glad to see the commitment to rebuilding the city's reserves, and I urge you to stay on course with that. But I'd also like to put in a good word for neighborhood streets. When you surveyed citizens about the money that the new tax increase would go to, repairing and maintaining neighborhood streets finished right at the top. The campaign in favor of Measure O highlighted the city's commitment to neighborhood streets. Yet, in the first three fiscal years under Measure O, only $265,000 or 11% of the proceeds go to actually repairing neighborhood streets. At the same time, $734,000 goes to calming traffic, building new sidewalks, installing streetscapes, and paving Park Avenue, a major arterial. Hardly the commitment to repairing neighborhood streets that you had pledged. Slurry sealing is an important and reasonably priced maintenance technique for roads that are basically sound. The trouble is, the Capitola has quite a few neighborhood streets that are seriously deteriorated, where slurry sealing is simply a waste. The deterioration of these streets accelerates every year, and some are getting dangerous. Repairing many of these streets gets passed over year after year due to the fiscal constraints of the city. Consistent with your pledge to use Measure O funds to catch up on repairing neighborhood streets, I would ask you to allocate Measure O funds to repairing these seriously deteriorated neighborhood streets as soon as possible, and to postpone things like traffic calming and sidewalk building until this is done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak? Good evening.
Hello. I'm Sandy Erickson. I've been sitting at home watching this. This is the same old stuff. You get our money, and you're back to the same thing. You want to add more employees, and I agree, we ought to fix the streets, but y'all all know too that I'm interested in that sidewalk down Capitola Ave, or down Park Avenue in my lifetime. And I want to know why we have not been beefing up police on busy weekends all along. Why is this suddenly something new? Why we need to hire somebody else or rearrange our people to get skateboarders out of the village? This is stuff that should have been going on all along. I want to know why we're paying anybody to plant flowers and mow grass, when those are the major industries in this county besides being a public employee. So I would ask that you at least think about these things, because what I hear is, hot dog, we've got the people's money, we're going to continue on business as usual. So I know that the measure won. It did not win by what you thought it was going to win by. I would say that it won by the number of people within the influence of the council, your family members and close friends, but that's my partisan thing about it. But I would hope that you would do something really different than just say, let's rearrange the deck chairs on the Titanic. So look at some real creative things about, you know, how to police, how to have more people here on the weekend without doing, you know, what you're talking about. But anyway, I just had to come down here and put my two cents' worth in. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Who would like to start out, Mike?
I will. I'd like to start out by making a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
I think that the comments that were made up here are all very specific and well-intentioned, and we know what we're doing, I believe. And with regard to public works and PD staff, I can't see, the last time I saw $35,000 for PD, it had nothing to do with a new body, it was, you know, a new radio or something. This is, it's incredible, we can get this, there's no better bargain than another CSO. It relieves our police of a lot of duty as well, and we get the most bang for our buck with a CSO, and we know that. Public Works Crew has been down two employees, I think three at some points for some time. They're not just planting flowers, these are the people we see at, if those of us who are up at 5 o'clock in the morning, these are the people who are clearing out our storm drains. These are the people who are hustling in the middle of the night with the slickers on during the flood and other slightly less dangerous situations. So the fact that Public Works has carried on the way it has in the last few years, the reason why we haven't... reason why we haven't had these people is because we didn't have any money. And we've hamstrung the Public Works crew. So I think we just go with the staff recommendation and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'd like to put a comment. I think that the Public Works needs some additional help and I think the staff report is good, is well done. The comment I'd like to make is that I agree with Councilman Sherman when he mentioned that we are going to allocate this Measure O money to repair the streets, but it's hopefully my intention that there will be additional funds when we go to do the budget to increase that. I like the concept of getting this above the index. As Public Works Director mentioned, probably takes in the neighborhood of 7, $750,000 to accomplish that. And I know that the city manager is hopeful that there's going to be additional funds and we can use the Measure O money as a basis to deliver what we said. And I believe we're doing that. The money's going towards the streets. Never quite gave it much thought as to whether they were residential streets or main thoroughfares or sidewalks. My philosophy on that is it's, it's the infrastructure we're repairing. We're going to do the best we can to repair those streets that are salvageable. We're going to make the most amount of improvement with the dollars. But like I said, the additional money's going to be there. We have definitely made a increase on the proposal to establish the reserves, which is another thing that we promised. And as was mentioned, a very minor amount is going towards personnel. I'd like to give us a chance to deliver what we promised into next year. And if that doesn't happen, I'd be happy to hear some more comments at the microphone. Thanks.
Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the only thing I wanted to add is maybe if we could include in the motion that staff bring back to us the schedule of what was described as neighborhood streets and their conditions so that maybe we could prioritize and look at working from the ones at the worst condition and trying to repair them as soon as we possibly can. Aside from that, I support the motion. Thank you.
That's one we're going to.
Well, I think we made a couple of our residents happy tonight. River View Terrace is on, on there for 2013, so Nelson Street will be done then. And then Sandy's concerned about the sidewalk is in there for 2014. Those are two things that we're committing right here. We're asking, we're doing what they're asking us to do. Park Avenue, by the way, is a mess. It's one of the worst streets in this whole town. If anybody drives down Park Avenue, even though it's artillery, it's still, it's still a project that needs to go as soon as possible. I don't know what you say.
I'd like to come back at the mid-year report with some more neighborhood streets that we can possibly do with some of the increase in revenues that we've realized this year and do some more slurry seals because that would, that would, I think, fulfill more of our promise to the residents that we were going to fix, fix streets. So I'd like to come back with, you know, another $100,000 or $150,000 and try to do a couple more streets sooner rather than later and so we show that we're, we're going to follow our word.
Yeah. Can we make that an amendment to the motion to direct staff to come back with a prioritized list of repairing neighborhood streets?
And I, I would, that's agreeable to the motion maker and I think that-
Okay, thank you.
-the Public Works Director is busily making notes. We're going to see that direction happen.
Is that all right with the second?
Absolutely.
Kim?
I would just like to comment that the staff report here clearly identifies that the ballot language was intended for disaster recovery and maintenance of general services, including public safety and street improvement. Street improvements to me addresses the areas currently in the budget as far as addressing the residents' needs, but I don't see how the next statement, which is really to increase service levels, is meeting with what the voters actually voted for, which is maintenance. And we do need to be mindful that the ballot measure only passed, I believe, by 65 votes. So we have 51% of the population who supported the measure and the other 50% that was not in favor of the measure. So I would just like to comment that as we review this, that we do stay in the spirit of what the measure was passed for and not jump to conclusions. And I, I do think that traffic calming seems a little bit fluffy in terms of what was, what we were trying to accomplish.
Well, just a little history on that. We've had residents in the area request crosswalks there for safe crossing since it's so wide. And so for a long time, we've talked about doing something there to slow down the traffic a little bit, especially because you're coming up the hill to, and it needs to be repaved. It's, it's in really bad shape. And, and I'm comfortable with the maintenance because part of the duties of, of the Public Works crew is to go out and fill potholes. And so I'm, I'm comfortable in making that connection with that. And I'm, and I'm really happy that they do plant flowers and take care of our parks because that's one of the charms of Capitola is that we are such a pretty town and one reason why people really like living here because visually, it's a really cute town and the visitors like it because it's a really cute town. So I mean, I think the Public Works crews are really highly responsible for making this town as nice as it is because they, they try to keep, keep things looking really nice.
Madam Mayor, it's in response to the traffic calming, I think traffic calming is a really bad term for Claire's because Claire's is like the Beirut of Capitola. It's literally falling apart. So the traffic calming is, is a small part of the fact that that entire roadbed has to be rebuilt. There's no slurry that's going to help Claire's. It's, most of that $400,000 is tearing everything out to the base and bringing it back.
Well, maybe we should reword that then. Maybe we shouldn't call it traffic calming on this. Maybe it should just be Claire's Road Improvement and keep it that.
And in response, I would like to clarify that with maintenance, I wasn't speaking to the maintenance of the flowers or the streets or the landscaping. I was speaking to maintaining staffing levels rather than adding and increasing.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, well, all in favor, we have the motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks for your work on this, Jamie. That was, that was good. The next item is Item D, consideration of the approval of the franchise agreement extension for four additional years with Green Waste Recovery for refuse, recycling, and yard waste services and rates for 2013. And Jim Maresco is here if the council has any questions and it's only, thank goodness, it's only 9 o'clock.
Good evening, Council. I'll be brief. We recently received a request from Green Waste Recovery, which is our franchise hauler, to extend the contract an additional four years. It currently expires in 2018. The request is extended to 2022. There is a clause in their existing contract that gives them the exclusive right to request that prior to the extension, expiration of their contract, although it is a bit earlier than what we would expect. I think what triggered this is they expanded their recycling facilities in Watsonville and some of you may have had that opportunity to wear the facility last week. So in, in their discussions with us regarding extending their contract, one of the things that they agreed to is to reduce the upcoming rates that are supposed to be, come in effect with 100% of the CPI January of 2013 to 90% of the CPI if we do the extension. I also want to point out that the city still maintains the lowest rates of all of the county for typical 64 gallon cart, even if with this rate increase that would come in in January. There are other options if you choose not to extend and then let the contract run out and expire and look to others to see if they would provide service. The only other service providers would be one of the local organizations, City of Santa Cruz, City of Watsonville. So that concludes my presentation on the request by Green Waste to extend the contract. And I'd like to point out that they are here present if you have any specific questions about their services.
Thank you very much. Other questions?
If I may, Mayor, I just, the clarification on the carrot for us is the 90% of the CPI, but that's for the duration of the contract or just for one year?
Just for one year.
For one year, okay. A small carrot then, I would have to say. Okay, thank you.
Miniature carrot.
Yeah.
This is a public hearing and if anyone would like to speak on this item, please come up. Then I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions for Mr. Maresco?
I will, I will move the approval of the franchise agreement extension with a note that there is no better bargain in Capitola. If you look at the other municipalities, if anyone has a long enough memory to remember our previous trash hauler and the incredible increase in the quality of service we've received by going to Green Waste, no offense on our previous hauler because I know some of the employees from that previous company came forward, but I can't say enough good things about Green Waste. It's just remarkable.
For all the, for all the public utilities that we offer from the outside, nobody compares to Green Waste. We don't have complaints from the public. You know, they operate, they come by early in the morning before you get up, they make a little noise and they're gone and your trash is gone.
They literally take out our garbage. Okay.
Take our garbage.
And more.
I'll second that motion, Mike.
Any, any other comments?
Well, yeah, I have a comment and no doubt, I think Green Waste is superior to our previous provider. But we had a contract with them at a certain duration for a certain set price. They are now asking for an extension of that, a modification of the contract, extending it for a longer period of time without providing really significant consideration for that. Basically, longer obligation that we're imposing upon future councils to be able to make a change if the circumstances should be different. So I think that we should be able to negotiate a better deal for these extended terms. Even at these modest rates, that's a significant amount of money involved. And for those reasons, I'm not going to support the motion.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim, for coming. Nice to see you.
Staying.
The next item is Item E, adoption of the City of Capitola's Local Hazards Mitigation Plan. And this is going to be Mr. Jesburg.
Good evening, Council. The item before you is consider, a consideration and conceptual approval of a local hazard mitigation plan. This is a plan that allows us to apply for FEMA funding and CAL-EMA funding to mitigate, pre-mitigate hazards so that we can lessen the impacts of natural and man-made hazards. Report was put together by a grant the city received, a CDBG grant. Local consultant was hired to put it together and with completion of this, we will be eligible for two types of funding. Let's see if I can find them here. We'll be available for pre-disaster mitigation funding grants and flood mitigation assistance grants. So these are grants that we could use for implementing any of the projects or programs that are identified in this, in the plan. It's a very cookbook type of report that we had to put together. You just follow their guidelines, you put it together, they go through and make sure we checked everything off. The report has been circulated for comment. It was a 30-day public notice. The only comments we received were from our museum director, Carolyn Swift, with some of the credits for the photos that were in there. And then we had a public hearing at the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission provided some comments. There was no other public comment at the Planning Commission meeting. The photo comments, photo credits will be incorporated into this report prior to submission to FEMA and CAL-EMA. And just procedurally, so you're going to hopefully adopt it conceptually tonight. We submit it to them, they say, okay, yes, it meets approval. It'll come back to you once again when we do a final adoption for it, at which time we will be eligible to apply for grants. Bill Weisman from RBF is here and is going to give you a quick, short look through the entire report. Bill?
Thank you. Thank you and welcome back, Bill. Nice to see you again.
Thank you, Mayor Stephanie. Nice to see you and the rest of Council. Bill Weisman, RBF Consulting, and I am your hazards cookbook preparer. The good thing about this is, one, it's going to help you get some funding and, two, just looking through it again tonight, it's really a pretty comprehensive history. So while it will adorn your shelves well, it also will probably be used for good reference in the future. There's a lot of good history, a lot of good photos and it's pretty comprehensive. Let's see, what do I just hit? This one here? Give me a little help here, Steve. Oh, I need to, because I clicked this. Okay, we all know about the hazards in Capitola and its proximity to the ocean presents some rather unique environmental issues. There's obviously storm inundation, beach erosion, and then flooding. SoCal Creek is basically a 40-square mile watershed and it all flows right there under the Stockton Bridge. And we know from very well, vividly, the storm events that have happened and they're well documented here dating well back into the 1800s. And of course, they've occurred beforehand, but as far as the history, most of the hazards within Capitola are related to storm events. And so the, putting together the hazard mitigation plan, I'm just going to give you an overall quick view of the index, the index of the, or excuse me, table of contents of the cookbook and then the process that we went through to put it together. So there's essentially five different components to it. There's a profile which looks at basically your existing conditions. Then there's a hazards profile that says, well, what type of hazards do we have that are present? And there's some rating of those as far as what their importance is and potential effect. Then we look at the risk assessment, particularly as it relates to facilities. And that's really your key is you want to protect your facilities. And then some mitigation actions and then ongoing maintenance. We worked with, not only with the City of Capitola, with community development, police, and Public Works, but there were a number of outside contributors. So there was an advisory committee. We met on four different occasions. Here's the list of some of the main players. I didn't have on there the Red Cross. I just want to recognize that they were also participating and there are a few others, but those are the main ones. And basically what we did is they met with each of the milestones related to those, that sort of anatomy that I showed you with each of the major milestones. And their last meeting was to review the draft plan. So they've had input on the draft plan before it went out public. So the first major effort is to look at what the profiles are. So there's a long list that FEMA has you look at and then you can basically take out those that don't apply. There's a scoring matrix that goes on and the total score, these are indexed based on priority. So there's an importance factor that applies to those. So these numbers don't total, for example, the first line, 31.2, but it's indexed. And I just want to draw your attention to those that are in yellow, which is the earthquake and liquidation, excuse me, liquidation. It's close to, maybe it's not even Christmas yet. Liqufaction, flooding, and then sea level rise. So as you can imagine, those things that are close to the coastline are where there's a lot of potential for significant impacts on hazard, on facilities. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of the maps as they relate to those items. Here's a map showing an earthquake and liquefaction. You can see the village there and basically it follows up within the, in this case, some of the, somewhat the contours of where the creek, SoCal Creek is. And you'll find that that's a predominant issue throughout all of the different hazards. Coastal storm and flooding, so inundation associated with the creek as well as coastal storms coming in. So floodplains and coastal. Tsunami, which Capitola is a little bit around the bend, which is nice so it doesn't get the full force of energy, but depending on the type of tsunami, there's one scenario that if, within the Monterey Bay, if the sides of the cliff and the canyon underwater were to, were to collapse, there would be a major tsunami that would basically be directly in line with Capitola and the village. Sea level rise, and this is based on a preliminary study and this is obviously very important is its relationship to the creek, but also what's going to happen to the beach over the long term and whether or not there will be a Capitola beach in, say, about 50 years from now.
I just want to stop there for a minute.
Sure.
I really liked the last two slides because the green areas are parks. Not very much. I mean, we have the wonderful beach and the wonderful coast, but all the more reason to try to work on that in our community is to preserve, preserve the parkland and increase it if possible. Thank you.
Maybe Jamie can get a hazards related to the need for more parks and then get that And then obviously coastal erosion and landslides, particularly along the beach and then even inland where in some areas, this is showing red, a gradation of red to green. So there's also steep slopes that are inland. You know, it's not just coastal related, but along creeks and ravines and gulches, et So we look at all those potential or those, those environmental hazards and then compare those to the facilities. And this is a long list, I'm not going to go through these, but these were all the critical facilities that were first vetted with the city and then we went through with the advisory committee. And I just draw some of the tension, some of the main ones to your attention. City Hall, obviously, and the police station, the fire station across the street, the Stockton Bridge, there's a number of pump stations that are critical, Noble Gulch, storm pipe, and then some emerg- Noble Gulch, storm pipe, and then some emergency areas where, you know, when there's an event, you need, for example, Jade Street, New Brighton Park, et cetera, where your staging areas are otherwise. So there's quite a list of facilities there. And in total, the replacement value of these is about $60 million. So, of course, it's not going to all happen, but just to give you an idea, we appraised the value and the replacement value of each of these. So you have a total of $60 million, and just sort of a breakdown from the standpoint of flooding, it's about $40 million, and from erosion exposure, it's $17 million, and tsunami exposure is $42 million. So if you look in the plan, you'll see that each of these facilities have, has an overlay with dots of where the facilities are located, and they're overlaid with each of the hazards. And then from there, we looked at the values. So it's kind of interesting from a reference standpoint of what you've gotten where and what the potential hazard effects could be. So there's a table about, I don't know, eight or nine pages within the plan that looks at all the mitigation actions. So once we've identified all these priorities, all these facilities and their potential effect, this is the meat and potatoes of the plan, and that is what are the mitigation actions. So these are the actions that then Jamie and company are going to go out and get some grant money to help address. And I'm going to go quickly, in case you have questions, just please interrupt. I'm almost done here. So next steps, we went to the Planning Commission, we're here tonight. What happens from here is, the document will go off to CAL-EMA, and they do their, will cross-check it and get their red pens out, and there's basically a checklist that they go through. It's very pro forma. Then they write a letter and send it off to FEMA and say, yes, they've complied, everything looks good. And FEMA says, thank you very much. And that whole process goes through about 45 days, and then it'll come back to you for formal adoption. Once you have adoption, then it's off to get the grant money. And that's it. If you have any questions?
Any questions, Dennis?
I got a bunch of them. First of all, Bill, tell me, what is this document to be used for? Has this become a land use document? Is it go to FEMA? Does it become part of our general plan? What is this document?
It's not a land use document. It's a reference document that is required. It's basically, you have to have this approved for you to go get funding. So it's a requirement to qualify. So every community has to have one. It's not part of your general plan, you're not formally adopting it anyway. It can be referenced in the context that, while we're working on the general plan, we've referenced and incorporated the fact that this exists, and, you know, there's a policy that's updating, et cetera, but it's not directly related to your general plan.
Okay. And this is something FEMA will say?
Correct.
Okay. Every time FEMA's name is mentioned, I'm real cautious, because they explode things.
Yeah. Can I comment on that? So we teamed with Dewberry on the corner there, and between RBF and Dewberry, we have a lot of expertise and actually people who do, they're not working on this project, but they actually review these plans for FEMA. So we know exactly what they're going to be looking for, and it's all laid out in a spreadsheet that they have to use, so.
Okay, they're not going to raise our floodplain level two more feet, huh?
No, that's entirely different thing.
They're already above everybody's roofs now, so.
No, they're not going to come in and make any changes to conditions or requirements in that context.
On page number 60.
Six?
It talks about a survey. I didn't even know we did the survey, but it was probably online. And what's interesting is that, in respondents, and maybe there are people who live right along the river, but it says 70% of the respondents indicated they are aware of the floodplain area in the city. I don't know hardly anybody that knows exactly where the floodplain is in the city, exactly. Okay, number one. Number two is, it says, it said 60% of the respondents indicated they are aware of the tsunami inundation zone in the city. We just established that. I have a hard time identifying where that is. So I don't know what the survey came from, or what the results from. Unless there's people who live right on the ocean, or right along the area, they're just aware that they're there. Go to page number 77.
Do you want me to answer those two real quickly?
Sure.
The survey was basically done, an online survey, so people were asked to go to a website, and then they filled it out through, I think we use Survey Monkey.
Profiling tsunami hazards, and it goes to Exhibit 12. And the statement here is that, as depicted in Exhibit 12, tsunami inundation could extend approximately 100 feet inland of the coast, reaching Cliff Drive and Grand Avenue. Cliff Drive is 86 feet off the ocean floor. There's no way water would ever get up there. If you had that deep, you would, the whole coastline of California would be absolutely gone. It can't possibly get that high. And so the wording, the wording somewhere is backwards. If you're 100 feet, you're at the first row of houses up on Cliff Drive, and you're also on Grand Avenue, but Cliff Drive, I meant, Cliff Drive does drop down the hill, so you could get the lower part of Cliff Drive, there's a few houses down there. But there's no way that this ocean could ever produce anything that goes 86 feet high. So I don't, maybe it's the wording of this, and that's what worries me about FEMA. Because all of a sudden, they start putting houses up on Grand Avenue in FEMA floodplain.
Okay, we'll check on that and validate that.
I think it's the wording. I don't think they really meant to say that, and the map doesn't even show it up on Grand Avenue. Maybe coming up the face of the cliff, or against the face of the cliff, but that's way above anything that's ever shown in the history of man.
Okay, all right, we'll clarify that.
Okay. The worst tsunami height that we've seen, according to this chart, was in '64. And I've actually talked to a couple of people that were here, and what they saw was, is that you could see the bottom of the ocean at the end of the pier. That's how far it drew out, and then it came across the esplanade, I think, when it came back in. And here it has maximum water height of 2.13 feet. So just to go in comparison to Cliff Drive being at 87 feet up in there, it's 1,000 times higher than the worst thing that we've ever registered. Also, I have an issue with, and we've discussed this before as a council, and I'm told that there is somewhere that states this, is that if you had a tsunami that is in Monterey Bay, according to this chart here, you'd have approximately, was it, five minutes of time to get out of that area?
Not long.
We, 911 reverse does not work, because nobody has landlines anymore. And cell phones are not in 911, unless you, if I'm mistaken, unless you register yourself into it, then you could be in it.
They are in now, by the way. They are in the reverse 911 system.
Oh, they are, okay. That, the best system for giving someone, and people turn their phones off at night, the best system to get people out of the village is to have a siren system. And traditionally, I think that tsunami warning systems have had that. If we had to exercise and practice it every six months and run it, people here would know it. But if you're living down on the bottom of that village, you want to know at a minute's notice. You don't want to wait for a phone call. You want to be known, and you have to get five minutes to get out of the bottom of that valley there. And so, in public record, this should go in public record, that, you know, we're discussing this, and that's a safety issue, that the earliest safety warning we could possibly give someone would be to run a siren. Is that something we're addressing here?
Absolutely. If you look on page 110, Table 38, is that Hazard Ventigation Actions table that I referenced, it goes on for about five or six pages. And under Tsunami Hazard Related Actions, Item 6, Subset B, Implement a Public Communication System, e.g. Siren, to Warn the Public of a Potential Tsunami Threat. So that's identified as an action, and then there's kind of who, by what, by when, is laid out across the table. So you've got that in there, and it should, you decide, it's a council to proceed on that. That may be either grant-funded or funded through your, whatever means.
If I may, since we're on that, were you going to move on, Dennis?
I just got one more thing to add, but you go ahead, Sam.
Well, I just, on that, the timing on that, 2017, and that's, I mean, that does seem like, I know that's a critical component of an early warning system. It seemed to be with something that we could do relatively easily, but we have it extended out five years. And in comparison, some of the other timings on, like, Item C, relocate, elevate critical facilities, we have a timing of that of 2015. So I wasn't sure how it was determined, some of these, most of these are just, say, ongoing. But I think, I mean, that's one that we should really look at, is the scheduled timing on some of these items. Thank you, Dennis, for letting me interfere.
The only other thing is, is that I think a document, the most productive thing this document could be, would be to have, give a copy of this, or at least a smaller version to everybody in the village. I mean, that's the area of inundation, whether it's from the ocean, or from downstream, or for tsunami. All three of those things, the major hazards we have there affect the people that live in the lower village. They should have a guidebook. And in this book should be an evacuation plan. It should have evacuation, how you get out of there, if that's, or what to do if those situations arise. So is that, could that be one of the purposes of this document?
I'm sure there are enough to look, I know there's education-related, there's a, I know there's sort of like an ongoing aspect, and I know there's an education aspect to this. So that certainly could be something, I'm sure that would be a subset or a component of any funding that you do, would be education. It's as important as anything else, because you can't mitigate all impacts, so certainly educate for avoidance would be a respectable priority.
Okay.
I think that you'd want to have as an action developing an evacuation plan, and through the educational process, handing it out to the people who live in the lower village. As was mentioned earlier, this particular document covers all of Capitola, and it seems like you would want to do something that's more specific for the village. And the purpose of this document is to be used to make you eligible for receiving funding so that we can implement and carry out those programs.
But most of this addresses the riparian corridor and ocean in the village. Very little addresses 41st Avenue, or the height.
And hopefully.
You know, I got to go back, and this is a great historic document. It really is. I mean, the stuff that, the pictures that Carolyn has and the timetable, the guy that got caught, old fisherman that got caught out on the pier when it split in half, he should be a cult hero in town. We've never done anything for that guy. So he knows his name.
I have to agree, we should name the pier after him, but I have to tell you, I'd be reluctant to give this document to everyone. This is a scary document. I mean, seriously. I would make it available online and publicize that, though.
It is available online right now, and we could publicize it some.
Maybe it should be rated R, just in case.
Sam?
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. All right, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you. It's a fascinating report, and an eye-opening one to read. I would encourage everyone out there to at least become familiar with the hazards that we face. I did want to go through, I had some particular questions, and maybe one to help my understanding. My first one is on page 25, where it has the hazard ranking worksheet. And under, the third one down, the sea level rise, it describes the effective area, and it's a number one, which on the table, number one, is isolated. Twenty, I'm on 25 of the report. I didn't, I mean, if we had a sea level rise, I mean, that would impact the village. I don't consider the village as being an isolated area. Is there some definition here that?
Yeah, it basically, isolated means from a geographic or spatial standpoint, so relative to your entire city, it's relatively isolated. For example, probably, look in there, earthquake would probably be much broader. Let me look and see.
Yes.
Yeah. Because an earthquake would affect basically the entire city. So it's a spatial ranking.
You're saying that the impacts are, would be contained within a defined area, and therefore determine, even though it may be the most important area in our community, it's considered isolated. I think that's, I mean, that's just maybe a confusing terminology, which would not necessarily describe how we view our community or the impacts in that particular part of our community. So that's my comment. On page 27, I also, the hazards and planning considerations, drawing, earthquake is, consideration is significant, but, and this is usually earthquakes, and then further down, it has coastal erosion, bluff failure. Sometimes those come in tandem, but that's not identified as also significant, it's just moderate. And I was curious about that relationship. And also, the second one, coastal storm flooding is significant, but further down, tsunami is only considered moderate. And so I was just wondering if you could maybe speak to those and how those rankings were determined.
Okay. The rankings were determined based on, and I'm not going to get technical, but there's, the page 26 shows the matrix and how things were weighted. As far as the process, the values were determined based on one of the workshops that we had with the advisory committee. So it includes city staff plus all those other stakeholders. So they came up with the valuations based on probability, excuse me, based on the effects you see on the first table nine, and then the weighting is kind of pro forma to, built into this, the weighting factor. So that's where the numbers came from. As to, you know, you're, I think what you're looking at is, okay, so now let's look at the big picture. Why is coastal erosion moderate? And what I'd say is, let's go back and look, make sure and validate that, because there's nothing to say that we can't change that and say, wait a minute, no, coastal erosion is a big issue, particularly related to your context of, it may not be spatially big, but it certainly is very, very important to Capitola. So I think we could take that into consideration.
And while also considering that, to me, some of these events, they come in tandem. Tsunamis follow earthquakes, and so I think that, you know, maybe the, some of the rankings and some of our mitigation responses should reflect of how Mother Nature works. My next, on page 52 and 53, which is the historical flood events, and it makes reference to the March 2001 pipe failure event, I would just caution that we, be careful that our language reflects that what we had was a compromised pipe that failed, and not so much being inundated by Mother Nature.
And sorry, what page was that?
That's on page 52 and 53. It's actually the bottom of page 52 on the table, and the top of page 53, both referring to the March 2011. I would just like to see that the language better accurately described the events that took place, or the causes of those events, and so that there's no misunderstanding.
Okay.
I think I made my comment about the timing on some of these events. Yeah, the, I was, I would say I would look at, on page 108, I mean, in the mitigation portion, the sea relocation, and maybe to clarify, I assume that if the mitigation is the actual relocate or elevate critical facilities, that's Item C, and the scheduled completion date is 2015? That seems unrealistic. I won't even say ambitious. I've been here long enough to know that. I don't think that's going to happen. I think you're more likely to get a siren, early warning system by 2015, and maybe the relocation by 2017. And so I would just encourage us to be realistic and look at some of those timelines.
Okay. And your term unrealistic is exactly the same word that the Planning Commission used. They commented as well. So we'll take that back.
Okay. And I think those conclude my comments, but thank you for your excellent work on this report.
It's a pleasure.
Other comments?
I just had a couple of quick ones. Just for clarification, we did not have this document when the Noble Gulch incident occurred.
Correct.
And the absence of that document precluded us from getting any reimbursement?
I'll let Jamie answer that one.
Unfortunately, no. What this document does, this document does two things. One is, the reason we, well, the reason we got no reimbursement in that case was because the Fed didn't make the disaster declaration. So FEMA didn't step in and release the funds. In addition, while the state made a disaster declaration, they didn't release their Disaster Act funding, which, as far as I'm aware, has not happened to any other community. What this document does is entitles you to more reimbursement when the federal government and the state government do make the disaster declarations and do release the money. And if I recall correctly, it increases the reimbursement rates by a couple percentage points.
Only if they decide that you're eligible.
But the other key, and this is frankly, one of the reasons why, you know, I identified this as a priority as soon as we went through this, was, four years ago, when I first came to the city, I had a meeting with a FEMA staff person, and I said, this is silly, our fire station, our police station are sitting in the floodplain, how can I get FEMA money to fix this? And he said, well, Jamie, I'll tell you, you got to have your LHMP done, and you got to have a flood. When you have both of those things done, you know, then you can talk to FEMA, and there's very good likelihood that we can help get some of this stuff fixed for you. But until those things happen, lo and behold, it ended up happening to the city. So this document not only helps us on the margins, should there, God help us, be another disaster, it also puts us in line to go to the federal government and say, hey, look, we have a problem in SoCal Creek, we need to fix it. We have a problem in Noble Gulch, we need to fix it. We have a problem with our place and fire, we need We have a problem with our police and fire, we need to fix it.
Thank you.
Michael?
Yes. I have just a comment about some of your replacement values. The pump station in the esplanade, you show a replacement value of $2 million. That was the budget when they built it, it was built over 10 years ago. I suspect that particular pump station is about a $6 million replacement at this point.
Okay. I'm sorry, what page are you on, just so I can make sure we capture it?
54.
54.
Page 18. I question the note that regular wind does not cause significant damage. I think it has in the past, and it continues to, surely only in the most severe storms, but, and maybe it doesn't meet the criteria for severe damage, but wind does have a factor. And, just a general note, you know, and we're so used to talking about the 100-year flood, I think we've come upon a time with the weather patterns and, you know, the way the ocean is reacting to us, or to whatever's happening, where 100-year flood doesn't have a frame of reference anymore, because we think of a flood we had two years ago and think we're good for 98 years. 100-year flood's a very dubious term. 100-year flood level could happen three years in a row, as you know.
Right.
And, lastly, I was very critical, and I voted against this taking place, just as a, kind of a, taking a stand, because I hate the way we shuffle around tax money, and they tell us where they're going to give us tax money, because we have to do something so they can give us more money. But, this is really a fine report. This is really well done, it really, it quantifies some things. There's no one in Capitola that doesn't know all about these hazards. This, it's common knowledge. We know what's going to happen, and we know where to run when the tsunami warning goes. We know where to go if we're not a tourist, we don't go down to the ocean and watch the big wave come in, we go somewhere else. But, this is very carefully prepared and prioritized, and just well done, all the way around.
Thank you.
And I, I guess there's no real action here except accepting the report, right?
Correct. Right?
Stephanie, come in.
Sure. Quick, Dennis.
You know, I agree, I think it's a well-done, it's a good educational document. It still scares me. Because when this, things like this get in the hand of FEMA, all of a sudden, they've elevated our village 18 feet off the ground. They're forcing us to move all of everything through attrition out of the village. It's kind of self-defeating, you know, it could be self-defeating if, so I want assurance, Susan, Jamie, Bill, that this does not become a land use document. I want assurance that this is not going to be the beginnings of our, you know, the, it being integrated into our general plan and also into FEMA documents.
Dennis, if that were to happen, then all those Okies would have been forced out of the banks of the Mississippi years ago, but, God darn it, they're rebuilding, okay, so...
The guys on New Jersey shores, too.
I think this is probably best thought of as a document that came out of Washington, DC, in some legislators' infinite wisdom, saying, this is silly, we keep sending money to those folks on the, in Oklahoma on the Mississippi River, year after year after year. Before we send them money, we should have them put together an inventory of what the risks are and a plan to avoid them. So, I mean, this, I think that's the best way to think of this document. It came out of federal legislation, saying, we're getting sick of paying for the same thing over and over again. If you want money, you have to show us how you're going to get out of this business. So, but, Susan's exactly right, this is not a land use document, it's intended to be a land use document, it will not be part of our general plan.
Bill, would you please look closely at the Grand Avenue, Cliff Drive statement here?
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just had, I just had one correction on the addendum that was provided by the museum director, Carolyn Swift. It has cover, and then it has pages, and then it has some corrections, and then it has appendices. At the very last one, under document, under the cover, I mean, it says page 15, figure 15, there's no figure 15 on page 15, and so then I thought it must be in the appendices on page 15, but then it, there's no figure 15 listed, so maybe you could just look into that later on, and, and just put down the correct page for that, whichever that, whatever that is.
Okay.
But anyway, yeah, it was great, it was fun to read, and brought back a lot of memories, and this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to the council. Were there any more comments or discussion on this item?
There's, there's a, there are great pictures of our casino.
I saw that.
And this is totally facetious, but it is my dream for a casino. But, we'll, carry on, I have no more, nothing else to say.
We're being asked to approve in concept this document, would someone like to-
I move that we accept staff recommendation with consideration of the comments made by council this evening.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item is item F, a request to amend the Capitola Municipal Code 10.36.055 Parking Meter Zones Rates, to authorize rates and zones to be established by issuing a coastal permit. Planning commission held a public hearing on November 1st, and unanimously recommended approval.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. This is an item to change the process of how the city establishes parking meter areas and parking meter rates. It's not an item that's going to change anything now, it's just changing the process. And currently, our process requires us to go through a local coastal land use plan amendment every time a meter rate is changed, or an area where parking meters or banks are going to go into. So, what we're asking you to do tonight is to adopt for a first reading an ordinance that will change the process. I think it's quite simple and straightforward. Staff has provided this document to the coastal commission, and they are in agreement with this change in how the ordinance is written. You were given out tonight, I believe, a new version of the ordinance, which did add one sentence in there, under section A, relating to that, the rates in the coast, making it clear that the council will be issuing a coastal development permit for the rate change. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about this proposed change.
Good housekeeping item. Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would anyone from the audience like to speak to this matter? This is a public hearing. Thank you, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good work. Okay, now we will go back to the two items that were pulled on the consent calendar, item E and F. E, let's start with E.
That was the authorization to recruit for the community development director position. Did you want me to go through the staff report, or was there a specific question I could answer?
Let's ask the person who pulled it.
Yeah, I pulled it, and the reason I pulled it is, I felt that, you know, we, at least I felt I didn't have sufficient information in the staff report to approve the hiring of a community development director. That's a high-level position within the city. There's no mention in the staff report about the salary, and, or the, so, and the total cost, and I would just like to have more specifics about the cost benefits to the city in moving ahead with this. And so, that's the reason I pulled it, and my preference would be to defer on this item and direct staff to come back with more detailed information.
Madam, Madam Mayor, council member's story, I think I can, this is the, what we're asking for at this time is the authorization to recruit for the position. This isn't the authorization to hire pursuant to our past practice, that individual, we would go through a hiring process where we would have council members potentially participate on the panels to interview and help select a candidate, and in addition, we would bring back the final contract for council review. So, you would have a lot of other opportunities down the road to take a look at this. In terms of the city's overall function, I think that, over the last 10 years, I think that the community development director position in the city has been one of the hardest working desks in the city. I mean, outside of some of the, our officers who are bringing in, bringing in the bad guys and our public works guys who are really taking care of the city, we have a lot of big planning issues, and we put a lot on that position. And Susan has done an absolutely wonderful job for us this last year, year and a half, but she is, she's retired, and it's important, I think, to have a management team. When I came here to Capitola, we had, I want to say, 4.6 people in the planning department, and today we're down to about 1 and 1/2. We're getting by, but it's, it's a really important position, and so my recommendation is, is that we take this opportunity to fill it. The proposed budget for next year, which you considered last, last May, did include staffing that position, the full-time community development director, in this coming fiscal year, so we're just moving this up by a couple months, and really able to use it within the existing budget.
But when you recruit, you have to list a salary, or you're going to say salary to be determined, because that's, you know, that's, that's going to be an important part of, you know, someone being interested in the job.
It'll be a range, it'll be within what the, the range of our current directors' salary are, so it's typically around, I think we start at 125 to 135, I believe that's the range, I'm sorry, I put it off the top of my head, but that's the, that's the normal range that we have now. And of course, we'll find out about the PERS rates, if they, let's say they were a new, new person, and they would be in a new PERS benefit program, of course, and then they would be entitled to all the other benefits that the city provides as well. But, yeah, the typical salary range that we're offering in our directors lies in that range, and that's what we put, depending on experience.
When do you want to have this position filled by, Jamie?
My goal was to see this position staffed, I mean, I, you know, Susan won't be with us forever, I think we've talked about targeting an April 1st start, which would give us three months of the new community development director in this budget, and then moving forward at that point.
Is it important to do this decision tonight?
It doesn't have to happen tonight. We weren't planning on recruiting until the new year, so, you know, we weren't thinking we were going to get the ads out this week, we were going to work on them and probably put the ads out in January. I think it's an important decision, and I think that if it was continued out, if you wanted to put more time into it, and know it's getting late, it's not, it's not a terribly big deal.
Do we, do we have a concern, because I know that Susan is technically retired, and there are certain requirements as far as how much we can work her and how much we can't, above and beyond what her good husband Nels will tolerate?
As you're aware, I'm a part, I'm supposed to be a part-time community development director here, and I will confess that the workload is very difficult for a part-time position. The city really does need to have a full-time community development director, not only who can be here to keep things going, but initiate some new projects that need to be taking place. Speaking for myself, I think we've done fine in the department, keeping sort of the status quo, but we don't have any depth to do anything new or creative. And, at this point in time, you do have a salary range in your schedule that you list, it's posted up on the web for your community development director position, and we've been working hard in my department to save money, so that you would have the opportunity to be able to bring someone on a few months early, so they would be here for a few months in this budget year, without having to come to the council and ask for additional funding to do that. And I think you have projects going on, the general plan being the biggest one, it would be nice to have someone start in that process during the spring, because some major things are going to be happening in the summer, and we do need an opportunity to coordinate and work together, because you don't want to be duplicating things that were done in the past. So, I think it's important for the city that you get someone on board, that you do it sometime in the spring, and, you know, in putting this together, have made the assumption that you're going to go forward with the process and salary that you have used in the past.
Are we going to have some overlap with that person in you, so that you can show them what's going on and, and explain projects to them?
Absolutely. That's part of my agreement with the city, and one of the reasons, I think, you want to go forward with the recruitment and get someone here, so we can do that together.
And if we don't find someone until May, would you, are you willing to stay a little bit longer?
I'm willing to stay as long as I can. As council member Tremini mentioned, there's a limit to the number of hours that I can work. You know, I've even volunteered my time here at time, because there weren't enough hours, and I care a lot about Capitola, and would certainly make certain you had a smooth transition, however it works out.
Thank you very much.
Want to continue it?
Well, that's, I've heard some good arguments as to why we should proceed with this hiring. I would still like to see them written in an agenda packet on our regular agenda, the costs fleshed out, so that we can consider and weigh those, and so that, you know, I think this is a rather sensitive time, as we've heard tonight, about adding additional staff, and when we do so, and particularly at this level, we should have it very well documented. That's, that's only, my only concern right now, and it seems like that maybe we could bring this back to the first meeting in January, so that we can have all the facts in front of us and fully consider it, and then make the right decision.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great. The next item is item F.
I pulled G, not F.
Oh, I'm sorry, G.
It was just in regard to a clarification on the PG&E contract, and a possible mistake or typo on page 47, regarding the amount of the rebates and the cost of the contract.
Yes, you are correct. On page 87, under the incentive, they had $5,337, $78. That is actually the amount of savings, the rebate was $8,775. It's just a clerker, it does not affect the loan balance at all, the loan balance is correctly stated on this. I contacted PG&E about this today, and they're looking into it, and we'll get back. Really, it, it's a typo on this, it doesn't affect our loan, the loan, we've already received the payment from PG&E, and it does match the invoice that we're going to turn around and pay them on.
Okay, great, thanks for looking into that.
I have a question on it. So, this is for the street lights that we own?
That's correct.
And, so we also maintain those, do we not?
That is correct.
So, what we, this is better than it looks, because we also save on not having lamp replacement and maintenance, so that's kind of an, always a hidden savings that-
Exactly.
I'll move that to this item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Jamie, when's the city going to become its own electric company?
I'm sorry, say again.
When's the city going to become its own electric company?
Council member Norton, I have a presentation planned for the first meeting in January about that very concept, about potential local-
Bulk power purchase?
Bulk power purchase, in conjunction with other local public agencies.
It goes well with the $1,200 PG&E bill we have for this month.
Yeah, because once we have an electric company, then we can buy waterworks, and we're all set. Monopoly thing, just one of those.
That's right.
We just bought the railroad, so-
We got the railroad.
I know, I know, I'm working it.
Okay, let's go back to item A, review of the city council representation on the city and the multi-city-county, and we will begin the horse trading now. Let's start with-
The game is beginning.
Page two.
Oh, we're starting with page two.
No, let's start with page A, page-
One?
One. It's in alphabetical order. Advisory Council Area Agency on Aging.
I think we lost Sandra Williams, she, I think she resigned from that.
Did she?
I believe so.
I forgot to call her and ask her.
Last time she contacted me, she is resigning from that, as is George/Bud Winslow from the Community Action Board, so just-
No, he said he wanted to be an alternate, and we got an application, he would be some-
He would be glad to be an alternate, yeah, but, yes, right.
Okay.
I don't know where you're at, Stephanie, I'm sorry.
I'm on the advise-
This one here, Dennis, that came to us today, was-
It was on your-
Page number two?
Page number one, look on the back of that. Page number two's on the front, and page number one's on the back.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Just trying to throw you off.
Yeah, it doesn't have a number on it.
Doesn't have a number, that's right, yeah.
So, is anyone interested in being the primary representative on this group?
I think we need a resident for that.
No, you don't?
No, I mean, I think it would be nice to have a resident for that.
Oh, oh, I've been on it before, and would maybe be interested in doing that again. Let me, let me think about it, and, and, yeah, I did it for a number of years, and I really enjoyed it.
And have we advertised that? I'm not sure we advertised that particular one yet.
No. No.
So perhaps we should advertise for that.
Let's just, yeah, let's advertise for that, and we'll, we'll, we'll not make an appointment at the moment.
Do you get that, too?
Okay, the next one is Ambag, and I'd like to step off that and ask Ed if he'd like to do that. It's a good way of getting to know the regional, the regional area. It meets on a Wednesday night. You can carpool with other people from this area. There's supervisors and city council members, and, or maybe go to a meeting and see if you're interested in it.
Definitely go to a meeting and see if I'm interested.
Okay.
It's a good way to start.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, this is the only meeting that occurs to me where council members get very small and quiet. Every other meeting in all year, we're all out there talking and shooting. But this is where everybody gets small.
Yeah. The next one is Ambag Sanctuary Scenic Trail Committee. That doesn't exist anymore, so I'm just going to cross that one off. Next one is Ca, is Community Television, and Dory Steinman's term expires, and we were advertising for that, I think, and didn't get any applicants, so maybe we could-
Does Dory want to do it, do you mind?
I'm, I'm not sure.
She spoke to me at the, at the global warming thing, the climate change thing we had here, because she was filming it. She said she would consider it, but she'd like us to keep advertising.
Let's keep advertising for that one.
Okay. And then, Mayor Harlan, I didn't get the alternate for the Ambag.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dennis, you want to continue to do that?
Unless somebody wants to take it away from me, I'm not jumping up and down. But I'll be happy to get you back, Ed.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, Community Action Board, we got an applicant, but I'd like to continue that because I want to interview her. And so I'd like to continue that. And the next one is the-
And Bud would be the alternate, correct?
Um, probably. Like, we, we won't decide that now. The Criminal Justice Council, I was on that for a long time, and then it ended, and then it revived itself, and Kirby was, was going to that. And Michael, did you want to?
I'll continue that. I love that one.
Did you want to be the, be the main person?
Sure.
And is there someone who would like to be the alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Madam Mayor, I will point out on the CJC that we have two seats. We have two actual regular seats.
Oh, that's new.
One council member and the second can be the city manager. So I'm happy, I, I probably will attend regardless, so.
Okay.
Can I withdraw?
Okay.
Okay, so.
The Justice American League, it's great. We're working on it.
So Jamie, Cultural Council. Dennis, you've been doing that?
Yeah, I've been doing it. There really is not a lot to do with them. It's an organization that kind of runs on its own. You can go and watch.
You want to continue doing it, or do you want?
I'll do it, yeah.
Okay. Hazards Materials Advisory Commission, all, did we get, we didn't get anything from Mr. Benson, but I'll call him and see if he wants to continue doing that. He probably will. He's a retired fire-
Last time he was here, 15, so.
Oh, okay. Don't have to call him then.
Last time he was here, he was still going to go.
Okay, okay. I was on that for years, and it was fascinating.
No actions needed on that.
Okay, no action. Thank you. Thank you very much. The next one is LAFCO. Dennis is-
No, I'm willing to give that up if somebody would like to take that. And what, what the issues are going to be is university expansion and water. And so if those subjects entice someone, you become an alternate. And so what happens, I think, next year is you move into a regular position, because there's so many city positions. So you're an alternate now, and if one person is not going to make the meeting, you, you have to go to that meeting, and-
I'll do that if you want to back off.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, League of California Cities, that's, we're, we're all members of that. We all get their, their magazine and go to the, they have monthly dinner program, monthly dinner programs every other month, and that's, that's, that's good. Library Financing Authority. Sam, you want to continue with that?
You know, I had taken on, maybe we can consider this with the Library Joint Powers Board.
Should be together.
Yeah, because I think those two should be together. And, you know, I had taken that on four years ago when originally Mike was doing that, and so I'd like to offer that back to Mike to-
I'd be glad to take both of those.
On the library. Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Okay, turning the page over. The Monterey Bay Unified Air Pollution Control District.
You still need an alternate on-
Mayor Harlan, we need an alternate for the library.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So Sam, you're the alternate.
Sure, I'll be, I'll be the alternate.
Okay. Okay, turning the page over. The Monterey Bay Unified Air Pollution Control District. Do you want to continue with that, Sam?
Yes, I'm willing to continue with that.
Santa Cruz County Children's Network.
And I'll continue with that.
Okay. Santa Cruz County Conference and Visitors Council, that has a two-year term, appointed for 2810, so you'll be off for 2812. Well, that already happened.
I'm, I'm already off, and, yeah, and, you know, I'm not quite sure, you know, why we have a seat on the Visitors and Cultural Council.
To learn more about it, so we will fund it in the past?
Uh.
And support it?
Well, I'm, I'm happy to continue if nobody else is interested.
It's a, it's a nice group. It's a nice group. Santa Cruz County Flood Control and Water, that's otherwise known as Zone 5.
I'd like to take that, please.
Okay. And then we need an alternate?
I'll, I'll come as the alternate.
Okay. It's a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, and they meet quarter, quarterly, and they don't have very much business, so it's usually a pretty quick meeting, I think.
We have a lot of business with them right now.
Yeah. Santa Cruz County Integrated Waste Management Local Task Force, actually Lisa is the main person, and I'm the alternate, and I think she'd like to continue going because it's really part of her work in Capitola, what she's bringing back to Capitola for programs. And I'd be happy to continue as the alternate. And the Santa Cruz RTC, Kirby was the representative from Capitola.
I'd like to take that, please.
Okay, and we need an alternate?
I can do that.
Okay. And Sanctuary Interagency Task Force, I'd like to continue with that. We haven't been meeting very much. We've had about three meetings of a subcommittee over the last year or two to discuss the Sanctuary Scenic Trail, and we'll just have, we're going to have some more meetings. Santation District, I love that.
And we love you loving it.
Sam, you want to continue as the alternate?
I love being the alternate.
Okay. You went to one meeting this year, didn't you?
Yes, I've been to one meeting, yes.
Thank you. The Workforce Investment Board, the city manager has been on it, and would you like to continue?
I certainly would be willing to give it up, but I can't recommend it to anyone else.
When does it meet?
Uh, it generally meets during about, I'd say about four times a year during the day. It's a daytime meeting. It is, it is comprised of city managers or department heads for the local jurisdictions, and then some folks from some of the bigger businesses, you know, the Bay, the Seaside Company, and primarily, its primary responsibility is keeping our SEDs up to date.
What's that?
It's sort of like the same thing as the Hazard Mitigation Plan, but for economic development. So it's a report that we do every year with the other jurisdictions, and it, it makes us eligible for EDA funds. It's, it's kind of pro forma. You're welcome to do it, but I, like I said, I can't recommend it.
Okay.
It's not the most interesting.
Okay. Okay, the next one is the Transit District.
I have a question about this, in that the reason that, that we play Ron, who's been a very good representative for us, is that none of the council members at the time.
Right, right.
So I think this should be open just briefly here, discussion.
Absolutely.
If there's any council member who'd like to take that position.
Absolutely. I did it for a year, for five years, and would be interested in that, Ed? And Regional 911 Board, Jamie, is that representative? And that's also city managers and county's-
I think that's by bylaws. I believe that that's mine.
Yeah. But council members are welcome to go, so if you ever want to go to that, that meet, I've been to a couple of them in the past. If you want, just interested in what the business is of 911, go with, go with Jamie to it. It's in the late afternoon, I think, 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock.
Yeah, they're usually at 1, I think, 1:30 is their usual start time, and they're Thursdays often before council meetings.
Okay.
We do, they're, can be quite interesting agendas.
Okay. And the next one is the Capitola Public Safety and Community Service.
I got that.
It, was it, now was it typically the mayor or just a council member?
It's usually the mayor by their bylaws, where the mayor can appoint someone. I will defer if the mayor wants to do it, or I will take it as her appointment.
They, they meet Wednesdays, and I work every other Wednesday, so I might not be able to make meetings, so I'd be happy to appoint you.
Thank you.
That would be wonderful. Then we have the Wharf, next page is the Wharf Working Group, and that's a group that meets and talks about issues about the Wharf, and-
I'd like to stay on that, but I'm hoping somebody-
It never, it never meets, but, you know.
It never meets. We didn't meet all last year, did we? We need to meet.
We should, yeah, we should meet, should meet.
We need to meet.
Yeah, we should meet, you know, quarterly.
And I'm Dennis's alternate on that, so I'm still supporting him and am ready to spring into action.
You know what we've done is-
No, we have two people, we have two, two members.
Oh, two.
Two members.
Okay, good.
And they like it because, the businesses out there like it because it gets us out there, we see what's going on, we can hear their concerns, and pay attention to them, and so they like it.
Dennis and I are out there once a week anyway, so we are the Wharf, the Working Group.
Okay, okay. That's, that's great if you could continue doing that. So are there any others, Sue, that you see?
There's, the Art and Cultural Commission has made a recommendation for two of the existing members to continue. There, we had no other applicants, so it just needs council approval to maintain its current members.
Well, we can, we can do that next time, or they haven't made it.
Oh, they can do it next time.
Yeah.
There, no one's going anywhere.
Yeah. The Ark and Site Review Members.
I, I think we should look at that committee and what it does. I think it's a good time.
Ark and Site Review?
Ark and Site?
Okay, we'll talk about that in the next one.
Next time, okay.
Okay. I think we'll defer the others until next time, unless-
Except for the Planning Commission.
Oh, Planning Commission.
There's one that needs to be done tonight, I believe.
Okay.
Probably the only one that needs to be done tonight.
Dennis, are you going to appoint anyone?
Yes, Gail is going to stay, Mike.
Okay, Sam?
Yes, I think Mick is going to continue.
Okay. And Mike?
Alinda Smith will continue.
And Ed?
I'll be appointing TJ Welch.
Okay, and I'm reappointing Ron Graves. Any others?
Madam Mayor, I did want to bring up that the Oversight Board to the successor agency of the former redevelopment agency, there is an appointment, there are two appointments that the mayor makes, actually. It's not the council as a whole.